It's been a journey to get here. You know, from the time that I was here as a principal, trying to do what we could with what we had, to really now being a showcase, you know, something that you're really proud to bring people in and show them around. What I learned about this campus when I got here is just that it's filled with a lot of exceptional people and programs. And something we really wanted to do was make sure that the outside matched the inside. As a superintendent and as a former principal, really a point of pride for me.
Change is hard. I love the old. And when they first were taking down the two-story building, I think I got chills and got teary-eyed. But to see what's kind of come from it and resurrected in this space has been beautiful.
Typical construction, you don't interact with the end user as much. You don't feel the impact to the community as much. Here at Orange, you get a real sense of how important this is to them and to the community itself. Sometimes you leave the job and that's it. But this one, you know it's going to be here for a long time. You know people are going to be appreciative of all of our hard work and effort to give them something that they've really been looking forward to for a long time.
We've had a lot of construction going on in the past few years. So with like two new buildings finally done, it feels like a great way to start the school year.
We've had people say that, like, oh, it's Orange. No, it's Orange. Like, we have new buildings. We have new stuff. We have new staff. It's amazing.
Being in this brand-new building, being on a campus that's really beautiful and well taken care of, I think it helps just kind of like focus the trajectory for these students to say, you know what? There's something more. And my community is behind me, both as a teacher and as students, kind of helping me kind of reach goals that I maybe didn't think were possible.
One, two, three!
I'm just blown away by how nice everything is and how modern it just makes you feel special.
Here on this campus, seeing this building out on the street and seeing the whole campus, this was the vision. This was exactly, here at Orange High School, exactly what was laid out on paper. And I think it's just phenomenal to see it. It really makes me feel so complete and so satisfied. And I hope the community feels the same way.
I think the sense of belonging from our students, they are so proud of this place. And we're really working hard on blending tradition with the new. And so we're excited for everybody to see that. And we just look forward to what the future holds for OHS.
Always a Panther!
Always a Panther!
I am pleased to share an update regarding the ongoing progress being made on our Measure S projects at El Medina High School, which is undergoing transformative improvements that will benefit our students for years to come. These projects are more than just buildings. They represent a commitment to the future.
I'm super excited about all the modernization that has happened at El Medina. The Measure S funds have just put a fresh face on this school. It just looks like a really educational, professional environment. And it's amazing to see how much they really appreciate all of that.
Overall, just really happy about it. They look great. That's probably the best thing is that a new environment, it definitely motivates you to do a little better.
So with everything new and like refurbished and like a whole bunch of new lighting, I think it feels more comfortable to be at school than it did before.
From modernized classrooms and state-of-the-art labs to enhanced spaces for career technical education and the arts, these improvements are designed to empower students to excel academically, grow creatively, and thrive physically. Thanks to Measure S, Villa Park High School is experiencing a transformation with modern facilities designed to meet the evolving needs of our students and inspire them to reach new heights. These facility improvements create an environment where learning and collaboration can flourish and are a testament to the support of our community and our shared commitment to excellence in education.
Everyone was excited to like see the new building. I think once we like actually got in here, it was kind of cool to see everyone's reactions.
I love it. Everything about it, it's just so brand-new and so like modern. You just are more excited to go to school because you're like, wow, this building's so nice. Can't wait to go to my new class.
Our amazing students and staff deserve this type of learning environment. We're very grateful and thankful for the community of Orange Unified and the community of Villa Park for this opportunity for our students.
Orange Lutheran has expressed interest in Peralta property since 2007. In 2017, we sent a letter of interest to Mr. Rick Ledesma and Ms. Gunn Marie Hansen, offering to work through the necessary steps to purchase Peralta for an above-market appraisal of $12.5 million. I stand here before you this evening to say that we are well-prepared to enter into negotiations that are appropriate and competitive in today's market. We were established in 1973, and since our opening, we have been a proud participant in many activities and services in the city of Orange. In the 24-25 school year, students came to Orange Lutheran from 206 different ZIP codes. Our on-ground, online, and blended learning platforms allow us to reach students from beyond Orange into different parts of Southern California. If given the opportunity to purchase a site and build these facilities, OUSD students will play on these fields and swim in this pool. A look at our athletic schedules shows that we regularly compete against Villa Park, Orange, El Medina, and Canyon High Schools. In 2022, we hired two experts in their fields: Cora Newman from Government Solutions for Entitlement and Community Relations, and Olga Bevez from J C J Partners, experts in school planning and public policy. They will be submitting comments in public session. For the past two years, they have met with OUSD staff, board members, and community members to discuss the possibility for students. Thank you for putting us on the closed session agenda. I'm happy to provide further information and communication as needed.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. Excellent. We will adjourn to closed session at 5:04. Thank you.
It's been a journey to get here. You know, from the time that I was here as a principal, trying to do what we could with what we had, to really now being a showcase, you know, something that you're really proud to bring people in and show them around. What I learned about this campus when I got here is just that it's filled with a lot of exceptional people and programs. And something we really wanted to do was make sure that the outside matched the inside. As a superintendent and as a former principal, really a point of pride for me.
Change is hard. I love the old. And when they first were taking down the two-story building, I think I got chills and got teary-eyed. But to see what's kind of come from it and resurrected in this space has been beautiful.
Typical construction, you don't interact with the end user as much. You don't feel the impact to the community as much. Here at Orange, you get a real sense of how important this is to them and to the community itself. Sometimes you leave the job and that's it. But this one, you know it's going to be here for a long time. You know people are going to be appreciative of all of our hard work and effort to give them something that they've really looking forward to for a long time.
We've had a lot of construction going on in the past few years. So with like two new buildings finally done, it feels like a great way to start the school year.
We've had people say that, like, oh, it's Orange. No, it's Orange. Like, we have new buildings. We have new stuff. We have new staff. It's amazing.
Being in this brand-new building, being on a campus that's really beautiful and well taken care of, I think it helps just kind of like focus the trajectory for these students to say, you know what? There's something more. And my community is behind me, both as a teacher and as students, kind of helping me kind of reach goals that I maybe didn't think were possible.
One, two, three!
I'm just blown away by how nice everything is and how modern it just makes you feel special.
Here on this campus, seeing this building out on the street and seeing the whole campus, this was the vision. This was exactly, here at Orange High School, exactly what was laid out on paper. And I think it's just phenomenal to see it. It really makes me feel so complete and so satisfied. And I hope the community feels the same way.
I think the sense of belonging from our students, they are so proud of this place. And we're really working hard on blending tradition with the new. And so we're excited for everybody to see that. And we just look forward to what the future holds for OHS.
Always a Panther!
Always a Panther!
I am pleased to share an update regarding the ongoing progress being made on our Measure S projects at Al Medina High School, which is undergoing transformative improvements that will benefit our students for years to come. These projects are more than just buildings. They represent a commitment to the future.
I'm super excited about all the modernization that has happened at Al Medina. The Measure S funds have just put a fresh face on this school. It just looks like a really educational, professional environment. And it's amazing to see how much they really appreciate all of that.
Overall, just really happy about it. They look great. That's probably the best thing is that a new environment, it definitely motivates you to do a little better.
So with everything new and like refurbished and like a whole bunch of new lighting, I think it feels more comfortable to be at school than it did before.
From modernized classrooms and state-of-the-art labs to enhanced spaces for career technical education and the arts, these improvements are designed to empower our students to excel academically, grow creatively, and thrive physically. Thanks to Measure S, Villa Park High School is experiencing a transformation with modern facilities designed to meet the evolving needs of our students and inspire them to reach new heights. These facility improvements create an environment where learning and collaboration can flourish and are a testament to the support of our community and our shared commitment to excellence in education.
Everyone was excited to like see the new building. I think once we like actually got in here, it's kind of cool to see everyone's reactions.
I love it. Everything about it, it's just so brand-new and so like modern. You just are more excited to go to school because you're like, wow, this building's so nice. Can't wait to go to my new class.
Our amazing students and staff deserve this type of learning environment. We're very grateful and thankful for the community of Orange Unified and the community of Villa Park for this opportunity for our students.
All right. I'd like to call the regular session to order at 7:05 PM. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3C, Report of Closed Session. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. For item 2A, the Board of Education has authorized the superintendent or designee to provide notice of release to certificated temporary employees as necessary for the next succeeding school year. The vote was 7-0. That concludes the Report of Closed Session.
Thank you. Item 3D, Adoption of the Agenda. Before we get there, our staff has asked to pull as to item 7C, the following board policies. And that would be BP 0410, BP 0510, BP 5131.9, BP 5148.3, BP 6152.1, BP 6154, and BP 6177. So with those items pulled, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you. Trustee Page, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Thomas. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. All right, we will move on to item 4A, the School Spotlight. And if we could have Mr. Alexander Tran come up and give his presentation.
Sorry about that. Is that on? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. My apologies. Well, thank you, President Erickson and the Orange Unified School District Board and community for having me and giving me the opportunity, as well as Villa Park High School, to come up here and show what the Spartan spirit is all about. In honor of the seasonal and annual School Spotlight, Mr. Brett Hartong and me, who currently serves as a video production teacher over at Villa Park High School, alongside a group of students, worked in collaboration to produce a video and presentation, not just for the Orange Unified School District Board, but for the OUSD community. So if you can give us an opportunity to present that on the screen. Thank you. Hello, Orange Unified School District community. My name is Alexander Tran. I serve as this year's student board member for Villa Park High School. Welcome to Villa Park High School, the home of the Spartans and where the sky serves as a limit for over 2.3 thousand students in your local OUSD community.
Hi, my name is Jamie Kuros. I'm a teacher at Villa Park High School and I have been a teacher here for over 25 years. And one of the best things that we can offer here at Villa Park is a variety of academic programs in that there's a variety of AP classes, a variety of subjects in art, in history, in English, psychology, or music. Whatever sparks a kid's interest, they have an option and a route for them to take. And I believe it's one of the things that really shows our strengths here at Villa Park.
So what's your name and what's your grade?
Hi, so I'm Grace Kuros and I'm a senior here.
That's wonderful, Grace. I'd like to ask, what are some of your most favorite aspects in regards to the academics here at Villa Park High School?
I love that we have so many extensive extracurriculars and elective classes. Like there's, we have like our Spider Lab going, we have computer science, our criminal justice, journalism, et cetera, so far I could keep going. There are so many classes that we can take that is almost too many options. We have so many different, just there's so much. There's so many different classes and little niche programs. Like Spider Lab is one of them, journalism, all of the things. And it's just great to have those resources so that way we can think about the future and what we'd want to do.
So hi, what's your name and what is your grade?
My name's Danalka and I'm a sophomore, grade 10.
Well, thank you, Danalka, for participating in our interview. I really need to ask, I mean, what's your favorite thing about Villa Park High School? I mean, in particular, our academics and our educators.
I think our teachers, our AP teachers are really good, especially Mr. Hunt and Ms. Kuros. They're really on top of things, have high pass rates for their classes. They know what they're doing. They're also good role models and like good to go for advice about things. And also just like good at guiding us through before college and preparing us, so.
So hi, what's your name and grade?
My name's Amelia and I'm a senior.
Well, thank you, Amelia. I'd like to ask you, I mean, what is your opinion on the academics here at Villa Park High School, the extracurriculars, and of course, more, I mean, most importantly, you know, the athletics here as well?
I think the academics are amazing. Our teachers are amazing. They're so supportive, especially being someone that is an athlete. I've done track for four years, all four years on varsity, as well as soccer, but not this year. The teachers are just so understanding about sports, as well as our coaches. They know that student, like being a student comes first before being an athlete. And also like so supportive on the track, because I do track. So supportive, especially with our academics.
Wonderful, thank you.
So I'm Mrs. Shine, Ingrid Shine. I've been teaching here at Villa Park High School for 23 years. And I've always taught in the art department. I teach photography, art history, Art I, Art II, advanced photography, AP Two-Dimensional Design. So we have quite a few things here to offer at Villa Park High School. In addition to me in the art department, in the visual art department, we also have Mr. Edlund, who teaches all the levels of art. And we have Ms. Clark this year, who came to us from another school. And we just offer a wide variety of subject matters in the art. And what I love about what we offer students is that there's definitely a home for artists, no matter what you choose. And our programs are continually award-winning. And in addition to the visual arts, we also have performing arts. And we have graphic design, digital audio, TV production. So there's just really something for everyone. And I love that Villa Park offers that for students.
Hi, this is Dennis McHusson. I'm the proud principal of Villa Park High School. I hope you enjoyed the presentation and learned about all the amazing opportunities we have for you here at VP. Just want you to know that the Villa Park staff is committed to maximizing every student's potential while they are Spartans. If you want to learn more about what we have to offer, I'd like to invite you to Sparticon, our open house showcase on January 29th from 5:00 to 7:30. I hope to see you there.
Again, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Brett Hartong and his group of students in working hand-on-hand with me in presenting this presentation to the Board of Education. I love this presentation because it really does exude the talent that Villa Park students have. I mean, just for example, the song that you guys heard in the background was made in-house. Now, I do believe it'd be judicious to kick off this board meeting by providing the board and providing the community a personal anecdote as to how I came to Villa Park High School. Like many students in this community, I came from a private school background. Upon graduating St. Paul's Lutheran in eighth grade, I had a choice. It was either between Orange Lutheran or Villa Park High School. The decision for me was not just clear, it was simple. Villa Park High School provided so many academic and extracurricular opportunities to succeed in not just an accepting, but diverse community. Coming to Villa Park High School, I only knew two people. The person that sat to me on my right, on my right, and my left. Despite that, I was able to be elected to ASB as Class Vice President and happened to enroll in several honors and AP courses, where I continue to serve in both ASB and also as a scholar-student till this day. My experience at Villa Park High School is simply just not exclusive to me, but to the tens of thousands of students that Villa Park High School has produced since its inception. Our fundamental beliefs in academic independence fosters an environment success that happens to bring and attract students from all corners of not just this district, but the entire county. Only in Villa Park can students enroll in several AP programs their sophomore year. And only in Villa Park can students pursue their professional interests with the myriad of CTE programs that we happen to offer. And only in Villa Park can a student also happen to simultaneously happen to partake in both our drama and esports programs. These experiences serve as a living example that at Villa Park High School, the sky is a limit, where you happen to define your own success. Over 31 AP courses, dozens of honors classes, and sports of all kinds. And lastly, over 50 registered clubs of all interests and backgrounds. We offer a student's a blank canvas to paint on. And they have happened to create something so beautiful that Villa Park High School stands today as the envy of Orange Unified. It is with the help of our educators, such as Ms. Shine, who was the Orange County Department of the Education 2021 Teacher of the Year, Mr. Ashino, a product of Ivy League schools, that students can fulfill their dreams and continue their pursuit as students of society. Our drive for success as Spartans has spurred a sense of spirit and community, one that is rivaled by only so few. It is that sense of community that drives us and determines who we are as Spartans today. Weenies on the Hill, Vanilla Park, mistruths that have happened, have been repeatedly debunked. We take pride in the fact that at Villa Park High School, our diverse community makes us stronger. Our aspirations for success and academic stride is a reminder that we are not divided by our income or race, but rather united in our identity. in our identity as Spartans. We at Villa Park, the home of the Spartans, serves as an example that you define your own success, and that the sky serves as your limit, even for the private school boy in a public school. And with that being said, I do cordially invite the Board of Education and the Orange Unified School District community to join us, as well as myself, to learn further about what Villa Park High School has to offer on January 29th, 5:30 PM, at our Sparticon event. Thank you so much for giving the opportunity to show you guys what Villa Park High School is all about. Thank you. And lastly, and lastly, I do, I know I brought my entire army here, but I thank President Erickson, if it's okay with you, if we could take a photo with the entire board?
Absolutely. I was going to ask if you were going to introduce your crowd here.
Of course. Well, Jimmy, our ASB president, will lead the way.
Thank you to our Villa Park Spartans. That was a very exciting report. You obviously have a lot of school pride, and we appreciate your time here at the board meeting. Item four C, moving on to board, I'm sorry, four B, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. First thing, I want to acknowledge the work of our staff in trying to continually be, excuse me, be continually prepared for the possible power outages that have been threatening this past month. We are all shocked and saddened by the loss of property and life in LA County, and know that that could have easily been us. Being prepared doesn't eliminate the threat, but allows for some level of certainty as to how we will support our schools. In order to be prepared, the district rented generators and had them staged at El Medina High School and Espinade Elementary School. Additionally, a small OUSD generator was made available to support Panorama Elementary School in case the power shut down there. Fortunately, Edison didn't need to shut the power down, at our schools at least, but our staff was ready. And if you're wondering why these particular schools, it's because they're in a zone that Edison has identified is likely to be shut down, which is what happened back in November. So I'd like to acknowledge and thank numerous employees from maintenance and operations, transportation, student and community services, our communication staff, and many others who are monitoring the winds and Edison website very early each morning when high winds were forecast. You know, it's the generators that were rented and staged were only going to be able enough to power the offices, but at least that way phones would work, the internet would work there, they'd be able to get messages out to people. Fortunately, we didn't have to use them, but we were ready, and I really appreciate the work that our staff put into this. And the text message, you know, that started at 4:00 in the morning about, oh my gosh, the winds have started, you know, I couldn't sleep at night, it was so loud. And, you know, we're living that and trying to protect our students and support our teachers in getting through this. So I just, I really want to recognize those employees that put in all that work. Additionally, January just happens to be School Board Appreciation Month. And so, yeah, there you go. So, yeah. So I just want to acknowledge and appreciate our school board for the work that they do. They, you know, I know it looks like it's all fun and games, but it's not. They put in a lot of work, and they care a lot about this community, about our students, about our teachers. A lot of times, they're asked to make difficult decisions, and they use the best wisdom they have to do that. And I am so appreciative of them and being able to work with them. So thank you all very much, and happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you so much. That's all right. We're good. We're good. Thank you so much. That was very nice. So next on the agenda is the president's report. And so I wanted to welcome everybody to our first regular board meeting of 2025. We're really happy to have you here, have everybody smiling and looking sharp at the beginning of the year. Last week, the Board of Education met for our first special meeting, and it was a governance meeting. It was open to the public, but the purpose was to bring all of us trustees together for an open discussion about ways in which to ensure best governance practices. That included discussions of what our role as a board is, what norms we would like to establish, and what our goals and expectations are for ourselves and for our superintendent. I was really grateful for everybody. Everybody showed up, and it was a, I think, a very important meeting, a very positive meeting. It lasted about four hours, so everybody was very, just contributed so much. And I'm just so, again, I said it before, it's just so nice to have everybody that's so invested in Orange Unified, either as parents, former employees, alumni, all of that on this board. And so I really do appreciate your time. So for those who do wonder what the role of the board is, we, there are a few things that we discuss that I think it is important to remind the public sometimes about. And first and foremost, we only act as a board, meaning only when we are together in a public meeting as a group of seven, do we speak officially. No individual board member has authority to act on behalf of the board, and no individual board member actually has authority to speak on behalf of the board, other than, under certain circumstances, the board president, who can serve as the spokesperson, but only when granted that right. We are committing to, committed to ensuring that we each have the same information, that we have as much information as we need, and we take as much time as we need in order to ensure that we have that information. And it's our intention to hash out our disagreements in a civil manner, at an open board meeting, and then stand by those decisions that are made by this body. Second, we all believe in utilizing appropriate processes that are set in place for decision-making and ensuring that we have transparency at all stages of those decisions that we make. Third, we as board members, we are not employees of the district, nor do we have supervisory power over all of the other employees, except our superintendent. The superintendent is the one and only person the Board of Education hires. The board sets the direction of the district and optimizes and prioritizes resources to fulfill that mission on behalf of all students, but is ultimately up to the superintendent and employees to operationalize that vision. So you may have noticed some changes to the agenda, the order of the agenda. We discussed the fact that at these regular board meetings, these are business meetings. Even though they are conducted in public, they are our business meetings. And they are the time and place for us to deliberate and vote. And all too often, we do not get to the business of the board for an hour or more. So we decided as a board that we would move our board comments to the end of the meeting, and we would keep our comments to approximately two minutes. We also created an agenda item specifically for student board members to report out. Our public comments regarding action items will still be heard at the time an agenda item is called, but it will now follow the staff's presentation. We believe this will allow the public the chance to listen and perhaps learn from staff's presentation, and then adjust their public comments if they desire to do so. We want to hear from you. What you have to say is really important, and we want your comments to be as informed as possible. We may make further adjustments in the future to future agendas, and with that goal to make sure that these are really productive meetings. And we are all committed to providing the students of this district with the highest quality educational experience, and believe that well-informed decisions arrived at through good governance are the best way to achieve that goal. On a separate note, Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation has kicked off their 2025 Car Sweepstakes. The foundation, if you don't know, is a nonprofit organization consisting of really some incredible volunteers who bring together families, businesses, the community and schools to fundraise and provide resources to enrich each and every student's educational experience. The winner of the Car Sweepstakes will receive a three-year lease on a Nissan Rogue, courtesy of Stadium Nissan. And you can purchase your tickets through March 25th, 2025, and you can go to oupsf.org to find out how to get tickets. And that concludes my report. Moving on, thank you. Moving on to item four E, we have student board member reports, and I will start with Ms. Oh, I'm so sorry. I missed it. Item four D, I will turn it over to trustee Glass. I'm just so excited to hear from the students. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Can I have some wonderful people come up here, Christine Nelson and Katie Treat? And we're going to do a little bit of an acknowledgement and a celebration for National School Counselors Week. Thank you guys for coming up and standing next to me. We'll have more time to clap, so I appreciate that. Okay. So in this role, I'm here to just acknowledge the fact that the week of February 3rd through 7th, 2025, is the National School Counseling Week, and it's a time to honor the important work of school counselors in supporting our students and our schools. And at Orange Unified, we are proud to recognize our counselors for their dedication to helping students succeed in academics, career readiness, and social emotional well-being. Sponsored by the American School Counselor Association, this week, which is February 3rd through the 7th, highlights the meaningful role counselors play in guiding students toward achieving their goals and planning for a bright future. And with that, I'd like to present you with this proclamation. Thank you. Appreciate you. And then you can bring up your team, and then they can be celebrated, and then we can take a picture. And some of them will be up somewhere on Saturday. We'll talk about it later. Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, Board President Erickson, School Board Trustees, Mr. Christensen, and Executive Cabinet. My name is Katie Treat, Administrator of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Career Readiness. This is Christine Nelson, Coordinator for Student Community Services. One of our favorite responsibilities is supporting the incredible work of our amazing school counseling programs. In OUSD, we have 36 secondary counselors and 25 elementary school counselors, many of whom are standing up here with us tonight. We also have five counseling interns. As cornerstone members of the educational system, our school counselors empower students to discover their potential, overcome challenges, and forge paths to bright futures.
We are honored to recognize National School Counseling Week, which is sponsored by the American School Counseling Association, so that we can celebrate the contributions that our OUSD school counselors make in helping our students achieve school success and plan for future careers. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize their great work and to proclaim February 3rd through the 7th as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The work you do is incredible and extra necessary these days, I think. I think there's a lot of anxiety out there, and we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item four E, student board member reports, and we will start with Ms. Tanara.
Good evening, Superintendent Christensen, President Erickson, District Trustees, and community members. Tonight, I would like to highlight a few accomplishments for Cannon High School. In early January, the OC Register ranked girls soccer top 10 in Orange County. Our boys' basketball is currently ranked second in Orange County as well. Our varsity song comp team got first place at NDA Regionals, USA Regionals, and US Spirit Leaders. Last but not least, our band won third place, and our color guard won first place in a competition against the top 40 schools in California. This past Tuesday, we had a home basketball game with a jersey theme. As ASB, we did our best to entertain the student section and distract Foothill High School while they shot free throws by using our new curtain of distraction. We dressed up in funny costumes, such as a bride and a fish, and we put on loud skits for every attempted basket, and it was really fun. Finally, I'd like to highlight a couple Cannon alumni, Ryan Robinson and Zach Shinuda, for their 30-second Doritos commercial that is in the top three of a national Super Bowl commercial contest. Voting is still happening for one more week, every day. Thank you for listening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza.
Good evening, Superintendent Christensen, Board President Erickson, Board Trustees, Cabinet, and Community. El Medina is currently starting off our new semester very strong. Our winter sports are currently wrapping up their season, celebrating with their teams and honoring their seniors for the dedication they have put towards their sport. Let me hear me. Our varsity cheerleading team had recently won regionals this Saturday, placing first amongst eight, sorry, amongst eight other teams, and are currently heading towards nationals. Girls' water polo celebrated their season with their senior night today, and are currently preparing for CIF. In addition, in response to the LA wildfires that have affected thousands of families, our Red Cross Club is currently holding a blood drive on January 29th to help support blood banks across LA. We will also be holding a community-wide flea market run by our sports and clubs to help raise funds for their programs. There will be a variety of items, such as food, desserts, clothing, and more. So please come out, support our vanguards on February 1st from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Elmo is excited to see what this new semester will hold, and our seniors are planning to make it their best one yet. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. San Juan.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. We would like to give a big thank you to the Orange Unified Public School Foundation for their generous donation to kickstart a new soccer program at Richland High School. Students will have the opportunity to be part of the Richland Soccer Team and play in friendly games against other schools. At the start of this quarter, Richland is focused on positive attendance. All students with at least 45% attendance will receive a party pizza. ASB leadership is currently planning a prom for early May. ASB continues to promote school connectness and opportunities for students to have positive experience. Two leadership students have been invited to be part of the Rowdy Club Youth Leadership Retreat. Richland welcomed over 30 new students this quarter. They are excited to have an opportunity to get on track and meet their goals. Thank you.
Ms. Lopez.
Good evening, members of the board, District Trustees, and Superintendent Christensen. I will be sharing a little update about Orange High School. So yesterday, we at Orange High School hosted our annual community showcase, where we welcomed all of our feeder schools from elementary and middle schools, and we got to have over 28 performances from all the little kids. And our ASB and clubs and programs are able to showcase all of their specialties and their programs, and meet some of the staff on campus. As well, we were really happy to have so many people at our school yesterday. We were really, really packed, so there were parents like parking in the neighborhoods, other elementary schools, and they would walk over, and it was amazing to have all of them there. We also are going to be bringing back our eighth grade visits. So this is a request from our eighth graders from our middle schools. So we are bringing it back this February. So we're going to have students from Puerto Lo Santiago and Yorba Middle School come onto campus to get a tour, and then our ASB team is going to be having a little assembly to introduce all of our clubs and sports, so they know what's at Orange High School for our future Panthers. And every year, our Orange High School's leadership mission is about giving back to those in need. So one thing we love to do every year is our annual penny drive, which is directly in to raise funds for those at the friendly center and for the leukemia to raise funds for those at the Friendly Center and for the Leukemia and Lefomo Society. So last year, we donated close to $6,000, and we're hoping that we make our... we beat our goal and that we make it to $8,000 this year. So during the three weeks of this drive, we host many activities and fundraisers to host and raise that money for those two programs. And in honor of our Honor Roll Celebration, this on Friday, January 31st, we're going to be honoring over 400 students on campus, so that's almost 25% of our entire student body, which is really great for us. And we are really proud of all of our Panthers for all the work that they have done throughout these past few semesters. And as winter sports are coming to an end, we're excited to start off our senior... or sorry, our spring season, as we get to host new games in our newly renovated dome. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Tran.
Well, first and foremost, thank you again, President Erickson and the Board of Education, for allowing me the opportunity, as well as our ASB, to come in and present what Villa Park High School has to offer. So anyways, to initiate my report, I just want to greet the Orange Unified School District Community, Superintendent Christensen, and once again, the Board of Education. To start off, I just really have to say, and this is really an honor for Villa Park High School, just recently, we were named in the U.S. News Top High Schools, which is an honor that really is prestigious for Villa Park High School, as well as for Orange Unified. And I understand that also our colleagues, El Medina and Cannon High School, were also named as well. In addition to that, just the other day, Villa Park High School hosted trustee Glass and trustee Page for an agenda preparation alongside Ms. Karen Eric, Executive Assistant to the Board of Education. It was a great opportunity to show off what we have with our new 500 buildings, and also to go over, you know, the intricacies of a board agenda. Of course, in addition to that, we also, as I stated previously, we have our Sparticon on January 29th at 5:30 p.m. Just last week, we had our Winter Sports Assembly, which was a lot of fun. ASB worked hand-on-hand with our winter sports teams, such as boys' soccer, to really promote, you know, the upcoming season for our winter sports. And so it was a great opportunity, again, for the sports to really go before the student body, and also for our teachers, who happen to, you know, judge the performances of the sports teams as well. And I just want to congratulate them too. I believe it was girls' basketball and girls' soccer who were, you know, who received the award for winning the Winter Sports Assembly. And this week, we're doing our Clash of the Classes, and so it's an opportunity for, you know, the underclassmen, the upperclassmen, to compete against each other for points. And so how it works is that each day, there is a spirit day, and each day, you know, our underclassmen are assigned a specific theme, and same thing goes with upperclassmen. And just to end my report, our Interact Club, National Honor Society, and our Vietnamese Student Association are working collaboratively in fundraising items for the victims of the Palisades fires. And so we're doing our best that we can to our ability. I've seen it firsthand in my ASB room of tons of students bringing in so many items for the victims of Palisades. Well, anyways, thank you so much again. Thank you, the Board of Education, Superintendent Christensen, and the Orange Unified School District Community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's awesome to hear everything you're doing, and I love to hear that you're taking on these philanthropic... I'm impressed. $6,000 or $8,000 from a penny drive? That's incredible. Great job. All right, so we will move on to item 5A, Approval of Minutes from December 16th, 2024. There was one correction made on the name Thomas. I believe it was mistyped as Thompson. So with that change, do I have a motion to approve the December 16th minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I mean, Mr. Thomas. Just kidding. I'm only kidding. All right, we have a first. Do I hear a second? A second. Thank you. Trustee Pelly. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to 5B, Approval of Minutes from December 18th, 2024. Having seen no corrections submitted, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I saw a move.
Thank you, trustee Glass. Do I have a second? Thank you, trustee Yamazaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. All right, we will move to item 6A, Public Comment. And I will turn this over to trustee Page, and just remind the public that we will be hearing public comment as to those issues after the presentation on that issue. Do we have any public comment?
We have two public comments, 1 for 7C and 1 for 8A, and the rest are non-agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, as to item 7A, Superintendent's Proposed District Goals. Superintendent Christensen.
So I'm going to present from the podium, if that's all right?
Yes.
It is weird to be back down here, but I think it's appropriate, because I want to address all of you, and I want to make sure that I can, you know, read your body language, and I can kind of understand what you're thinking about some of the things that I'm going to present. And I know nobody put any blue cards, but maybe we'll... people will come up afterwards and have things to add at the end of the meeting. I don't know. So like most other school districts in the county and the state, OUSD has been slowly declining for many years. Our enrollment in December of 2024 was 25,134 students, while 10 years ago, in December 2014, the enrollment was 29,658. We've decreased by over 4,500 students in the past 10 years. As districts decline, our schools obviously get smaller. Small schools can offer an intimate setting for teachers and learning, excuse me, for teaching and learning, but if they get too small, student learning can be impacted. Keeping the comparison timeframe, there were three elementary schools with less than 400 students in 2014. We now have 12 elementary schools with less than 400 students, including a couple with less than 300. It is even more concerning, considering that since 2014, a new grade level TK was added, giving us eight grade levels to balance on a site with declining populations. To be transparent, TK was around in 2014, but a very reduced rate, enrollment rate, as the program was being rolled out. For reference, the TK enrollment in 2014 was 433 students district-wide. Now we're at 799 district-wide. When elementary schools get that small, it becomes very challenging to build classes that are optimal for teaching and learning. Combination classes are hard on everyone, and while often necessary, having schools with between 30 and 40% of their classes being combo classes is very concerning to me. In some cases, we only have combo classes at some grade levels at a few of our elementary schools. In other words, there might be a standalone second grade, a 2-3 combo, a 3-4 combo, and a standalone fourth grade. So there is no standalone third grade. So every third grader has to be in a combo class. And it's not just at one school, so I'm not trying to pick on or point out anything. I think, you know, our principals do a phenomenal job of trying to build classes, trying to support students in teaching and learning, but at some point, this becomes an issue. And from my sense, I think we need to take a look at this and talk about it some more. Next item is Employee Consolidation Workload Study. While looking at the decline in enrollment, and in keeping with the principle of directing as much of our resources as close to the schools as possible, I was drawn to our leadership staffing. Looking at leadership or management-level staffing for the, you know, in the other, in the private sector world, I found that there were 91 positions in 2014 compared to 114 positions now. Now, I can't stand here and tell you what the right number is, or even if the right number couldn't possibly be higher, but I believe it is something we have to look at. I can tell you that there have been numerous changes in school district programmatic regulations since 2014. At that time, the state was more about local control of our limited resources. Since then, the state has added programs that look very much like what existed before or categorical programs. Categorical programs generally come with numerous strings attached, such as specific accounting requirements and expenditure restrictions. These programs generally are generally very good for students, or we wouldn't have chosen to participate in them, but they usually are for a limited duration. For example, we have nine categorical programs. They will all expire within the next five years. Other funding, such as COVID funds we received, have been expended, but we're still completing the programmatic accountability requirements, which require staff time and management. So as we have these programs, we have to manage them, and part of that is what drives how much leadership, how much employees we need that aren't necessarily at school sites. So we just want to keep this in mind. That's why, you know, we need to look at it. I don't know what the right number is. Again, we may be spot on, but workloads have not been adjusted probably appropriately for the number of people we have as we've brought on these categorical programs. Additionally, like all districts, we are working to provide students with the least restrictive environment for their education. That means providing additional support to assist students in general education classrooms, when in the past, they might have been taught in a more restrictive, secluded classroom setting. Supporting these changes requires additional support, both at the site and the district level. I mean, it takes people to manage these programs. While acknowledging these changes, it is important that we are right-sized, and if there are opportunities to distribute workload in a more efficient manner, we need to know that. Additionally, as attrition presents opportunities to reduce staffing, we need to have a plan on how consolidating supervision and responsibilities might provide savings over the longer term. Regarding our facilities needs, if, you know, if the Board agrees on moving forward with some of the studies I'm proposing, we need to incorporate the extensive work invested in the facility's master plan as we work to develop school consolidation options. The master plan and other needs will help inform that work. Additionally, I would like to identify work with staff, identify and work with staff where we are going to concentrate our limited facilities dollars in the new term. Construction inflation is high and expected to increase in the short term. I believe that we need to work to get consensus on the first few elementary schools to modernize, in concert with school consolidation opportunities and funding availability. Later in the meeting, you'll hear a report by Ms. Holguin on current funding availability and options. I don't see this as the end, but the beginning of the discussion on addressing these suggestions. The last item, standardized teacher and parent communication software. I'd like to address something that I've been hearing about from parents and staff alike. OUSD, like many districts, does not have a standardized parent-teacher communication system in place. A parent with multiple students at a school could likely have multiple platforms or apps that they must check to be fully engaged with their students' teachers. In some cases, our secondary parents could have multiple apps for just a single student. Ideally, we will, with the help of our teacher leaders and IT staff, be able to research the apps available, pilot the platform or platforms, and settle on one, or at least one for elementary, and maybe one for the secondary students. I want to be transparent and let you know I don't expect this to be a free program, but as we strive to attract and retain students, parents, and teachers, getting united around one platform will allow us to make sure that it is a secure platform and offer parent and teacher help desks, where right now, there are numerous platforms out there, and we, quite frankly, as a district, don't provide any support, and our teachers are using what they can find for free, or their platforms are being paid for by parent groups on their campuses. So we need to move forward. I feel we need to move forward with this and take control of it and help get ourselves up to the 21st century, because our teachers have been doing it, but they're doing it on their own without our support. So that concludes my presentation. It's the most all you'll ever hear me talk, and I apologize, but it's important stuff, and it's all... it's a big deal, I think, for us to be able to move forward and be healthy fiscally, and also be able to provide support for our students that they deserve to have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Christensen. I'm going to ask you to stay there in case any of the trustees have questions. So I'm just going to kind of go down the line and call on each of you for your comments, questions, and then we'll open it up to discussion after that. And there are no public comments on this. I just want to confirm. Correct? Okay. Okay. Trustee Glass, do you have any questions that you... Okay. Trustee Vane?
I'll just add that I personally have students with multiple softwares, and I definitely support that recommendation. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Trustee Yamazaki?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for your presentation. I really appreciate your input and observations. I really trust the work that you've done and your... I just think you've been doing a great job. First of all, I wanted to ask you, we implemented a track and retain program in the last couple of years post-COVID. I wanted to find out, you know, how did that improve our numbers compared to the state or actually compared to the districts that surround us? How do we compare in that way?
So I don't have the numbers. My understanding is anecdotally that yes, it has helped, but I think that's part of this study, right? It's part of what we're going to take a look at, because we have administrators that are responsible for that. So we want to be able to look at that and make sure that the investment that we're making is actually providing the returns that we would expect. So the way that we can do that is compare those numbers, look at the state, look at the county, and see what it looks like here at OUSD. So I'm sorry, I don't have numbers.
No, that's okay.
But that's the reason for, you know, doing studies on some of this stuff, right? I'm not coming up here with, here are the solutions. That's why my recommendation is, is that we dedicate the staff time and energy, and we invite our teachers to participate, our classified employees to participate, so we can end up with a better product at the end of the day. It won't be an overnight thing, but we'll be bringing back reports from time to time to the Board on each of these items, if that's what the preference is for the Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Page?
Thank you, Superintendent Christensen. You've only been here for a couple months and already created a scope of what we need to look into and study. And a lot of these different areas, they overlap as well, so they all impact each other, and I can tell that you thought very deeply about all of these different things that we need to look into. And I also want to second what trustee Vane said. I have two students, and they each have three different apps that we go into, and that's not even counting, like, ELOP activities, and then also CARES after school. So it's just, I have to check five different things to make sure I didn't miss anything. And they're only in elementary school. But there's a lot of needs in our district, and I think these are four, if not five, like, deep areas that we really need to look into that we've all discussed, and instead of putting Band-Aids on them, you know, throughout, you know, random agenda items, I'm really looking forward to going deeply into each one of these. So thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you for that presentation. I think, again, I'll just echo, you've put a lot of thought into this. I think you have so much experience, having history with the district. You kind of understand coming back and seeing some of the changes, things that drew your attention, obviously, to kind of come up with the things that you think are urgent enough to talk about now. I, for one, appreciate the fact that the... That's me? What's going on? The LCAP survey for years that parents and teachers and staff and the community take, it's always a concern, combo classes. The standardized parent-teacher communication platform, I think we've seen that a lot in our LCAP surveys, so I think it's important that, to acknowledge that that's something that has been brought up by the community and that we're looking at, talking about what we can do for that. Just coming from small school sites, in one sense, it's nice to have a small school, but there's so many opportunities that can be missed, and I can tell you that the workload for teachers, the duties that they have to do, they need to be on school site council and PTA and the leadership team, and when you have a small staff, there are going to be teachers that are doing multiple duties, multiple, you know, committees that they're on, and it's a lot. It's always exciting when you get a new teacher. It's like, hey, one more person to add to that duty schedule. So I think that's just another layer of that, because small schools do sound great, but if we could consolidate, have a little bit bigger school, and then find out what we can do with other school sites. I think that's really an important and kind of a newer idea that we haven't talked about in a while. So I appreciate the thought you've put into it. I'm looking forward to hearing more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pelly. Trustee Thomas?
For once, I think I had a crystal ball, because at the ribbon-cutting ceremony, I...
I ran into you, and I went home going, he's going to be our interim. And for that, I thank you. I like all of these things. Meeting with you the other day. I know I told you, and I still don't like combo classes, because I was in a combo class growing up. And I do believe, number five, we do need a standardized app. I think everyone will benefit from that, especially parents. And yes, thank you for the report. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, this board is committed to looking to the future and ensuring positive outcomes for students, not just next year, but five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. We want to create the healthiest district that we can so that we can really serve our students well. So I appreciate, in this report and in conversations with you, that you have really thought about how all of these issues intersect, how facilities and facilities improvements can really be used to optimize if we do, if your study determines that we need to consolidate campuses, utilizing that facilities master plan and utilizing facility funds to make a new and improved facility for students and then to have those larger programs so that we don't have as many combination classes and we can really improve upon student engagement, student performance, and student experience. And I think all of us want that to be the ultimate goal. And so I think when you're doing these studies, I know you will keep that in mind, but I think that that's always the North Star, is to see how can we improve student outcomes and student experiences, family experiences. I also appreciate that, I understand, you were the superintendent in 2014. Is that right?
I was, that's correct. It's my fault. If there's anything wrong, it's my fault. So you know.
We know who to blame.
Exactly.
But what I've always appreciated about you, working with you when I was a parent in the district and now as a board member, since I never worked with you as superintendent, you're always willing to take a hard look and give facts that we need to consider, even though sometimes these topics are really difficult. It is ultimately our job to make sure that we are good trustees and good fiduciaries and making sure that we are creating the best environments for our students. So I appreciate you taking this time to really think that through, strategize. And we understand, these are studies. So, like you said, we may be at a perfect number of, you know, leadership based on the new regulations. We don't know. But it is important to look at that. We may, you know, not need to consolidate schools, but we need to look at that. And we know that we don't have enough money to upgrade every single elementary school campus. So if maybe we get a two-for-one, if we have a consolidation with an improved campus. So I think that there's a lot of ways to look at this, and I'm excited personally to see what you come up with, working with staff and working with our teachers and our parents. And even potentially student input. So I don't know if any of the students have any input into... Yes, you may. Trustee Glass?
Just to kind of echo a little bit of what's happening, I appreciate your expertise, because that's the courage you have to have to make these types of suggestions with regard to study. And I know the challenge in that, being from a couple of districts that had to look at our org chart and make decisions about that based on the data, which is, we had a certain number 10 years ago, we have a certain number today. What are we going to do? How do we make these things happen in the most seamless way possible? I think that's also important. Can you share what a study looks like for any of these? Can you just share what the general idea would look like?
Sure. So I think the one that will most immediately be felt and possibly, hopefully, be able to be implemented would be the last one, right? The student, or the parent teacher communications platform. I may be crazy, but I'm very optimistic, because I've heard this from so many people, including teachers who are parents in the district, principals who are parents in the district, employees who are parents. I mean, so there's, I've heard from parents, I've heard from other folks about this. So I think there's a willingness to take a look at it. So in my mind, it's a matter of getting some critical mass of people who are interested in this together and some representatives to do some research on what other districts are doing. I know Newport Mesa also isn't, you know, all set up on one. They're doing a study right now. They're doing a pilot program. Look at what they're using. Other smaller districts are doing this, usually wealthier districts, because they were able to get into this sooner, and they bought into it. So it's going to be more difficult for us, because we're so large. But I think that's the, you know, bringing back reports, you talk about the process, bringing back reports to the board and saying, these people got together, this is what they found. They're going to move forward with implementing, where, you know, at a school A, B, and C, or whatever it's going to be, and making sure that it's going to work. Our IT department's going to have to be really involved in this, because if this is our program that we're using, we want to be sure that it's secure, right? And that hopefully, the functionality will increase because we have a better, a more secure system. It may be better than what we have right now. On the others, it's kind of the same. It's, on the first one, school consolidation, it goes hand in hand with the, like, the facilities master plan. But what we need to do, staff needs to start gathering information. So we're going to get a demographics report based on the current year's C-bet, so October numbers. We should have that report. We'll probably have a draft of it next month. Hopefully, it'd be, you know, good to go by March. And then we can bring and make a presentation to the board, right? On, hey, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe suddenly, things are going to turn around, and we're going to start taking off with students. But I don't think so. But let's, we need to get numbers, right? And start looking at that. We also need to look at, with our enrollment, the inter-district students. So students that are transferring into Orange Unified from other districts is inter-district enrollment. So we have to look at that, because we've created programs in the district, some of which I was part of starting, the Dual Immersion Program at Fletcher, right? And the Mandarin Program. You know, that was, that, I was part of deciding to do that. So what does that look like? Are we really bringing in students from outside the district for that program? Are we just using, you know, bringing students from other schools? Yeah, I was at McPherson today for their science fair. And, you know, I was here with, it's a thing about being here for so long. I was here when we reopened McPherson. It was a middle school that was closed for a while. You know, we decided to reopen it. It was part of the conversations about what's it going to look like? Decided on a K-8 model, make it a magnet. Well, the whole reason why that happened, the same reason why all of us reopened, because we were on multi-track year round at the time. We were over 30,000 students, and we couldn't house them all. And we couldn't get portables down fast enough. So no good deed goes unpunished. We've created it, you know, it's a great school, wonderful leadership, it has been for years. But where did those kids come from? They came from other OUSD schools. So that's not lost on me. I don't, this isn't to say anything about that McPherson won't continue to exist, because it will. But it's, it's just good to remember some of the history as the pendulum does swing. And, you know, we want to be careful and deliberate when we take actions. But my view or vision is that we're coming back to the board, because this way, we're coming to the community, too. When I came back the first night, I said, you know, student achievement, fiscal responsibility, and communication. Well, this is me trying to model that. And especially with communication, because I've met with all of you, and I've talked about these things with all of you. So it's not a surprise to you. But the community hasn't heard them. And I think the community needs to know that this is what we're focused on, because we think it's important. And I think it's important. I don't know if you all do or not. You'll decide that tonight, I guess. But so each step of the way, we have to come back at a touch point to decide, okay, where are you at? And then you ask questions and say, well, what about this? What about that? Trustee Yamazaki asked a question tonight. You know, these are all really good, important things. But we need to do the study, and it's going to take some time to do that. First, it'll start with staff work, and then it'll grow, right? And ideally, then we'll be engaging parents, and it'll just, you know, obviously, our teachers and our parents. And it's just, it's going to be a process, because it's going to be painful. I don't, just like we're going to have to pay for the software program, it's going to cost something. There's going to be some costs, some political cost to consolidating schools, because it's a hard thing to do. And not everybody's going to love it. Even if it's for the right reasons, it's still hard for people. As superintendents, it's kind of the joke, oh, you're going to close any schools? Oh, so when are you retiring? Because it's a hard thing to do. It's hard on the community. But I think if we're deliberate, if we talk about it, and it's an open process, and we have good reasons for student outcomes, it's going to be really hard to argue against it. Again, some people won't like it, and I get it. But at the end of the day, I think we have to take a look at it and move it forward. Is that?
Yeah, that's perfect. And thank you for that, because it tells us a couple of things. Number one, it's going to be a transparent process. Number two, it's going to be more than just staff working on this. It's going to be the community working on it. I appreciate the time and effort and energy you've put into thinking about this. And I'm looking forward to the result of it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to board discussion. But before we do that, I'm going to give the students an opportunity to comment before we engage in our board discussion. So if any of you would like to pipe in?
Yeah, sure. Superintendent Christensen, for item five, standardized teacher parent communication platform, for secondary students, would that software be able to, you know, for student, be able to use for student use as well? Or primarily just for parents and teacher communication?
So the short answer is, I don't know, because it hasn't been decided. I think the right answer is, yeah, I hope so. I mean, that'd be awesome. So, you know, having student engagement, the idea is, if you can communicate with your teachers, they can communicate with you, and your parents know what's going on, then everybody is involved. And that's what we want. We want engaged teachers, students, parents, everybody. So yeah, I would say at the high school level, absolutely.
Absolutely. And I do believe it's the right decision to go for, because as of right now, as some teachers may know, where currently students we use as our form of communication, either email or remind. I mean, one platform where both teachers, students, and parents are able to communicate together, I believe would be much more convenient. As for just, you know, items one, two, three, it's not much of a, you know, a question, but more of a comment perhaps. I really have to say, and I do, again, commend you in bringing these items up before the board, because, you know, in terms of school consolidation, it really is a hard decision to make. And especially in regards as we're losing students. And as we continue to lose students, we lose on ADA revenue. And as teacher employment stays consistent and as increased facility maintenance increases, we lose on so much potential revenue. And I really commend you on making those fiscally, and presenting these fiscally responsible choices before the board, as well as us. And I'll be more than happy to really present these options and really share your wisdom with my students. Thank you so much. Have a great, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Either Ms. Tanara or Ms. Espinoza? Do you have anything to add?
I would just like to say thank you for bringing these issues to light, and I agree with a lot of them. And I liked the idea that you had about bringing the demographics analysis and finding out the numbers that are causing, for example, like, student enrollment to drop and then assessing the issues behind that. So thank you for your work.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Espinoza, are you good?
Hi. Just once again, just to echo what everyone's been saying, just thank you for bringing this attention to light. I know as a product of a combo class that having your teacher focus on two different grade levels, who that required, two different, like, completely separate curriculums, it's an issue, not only for the teacher who has to juggle between making sure that all their students not only understand their own curriculum and make sure that future curriculum, so like, the next grade level, for example, isn't, I can't find the word right now. But this is, it's like that basic understanding of, like, specific grade level curriculum, specific grade level attention is definitely a necessity in the development of students. And I'm greatly grateful that you brought that to attention, because my entire fourth through sixth grade years were combo classes. And that struggle of, not only for being upper-level elementary education, going into middle school is definitely a struggle, transitioning from having those, all those separate classes, because they require divided attention, and then being that product of divided attention, it kind of just like brings that struggle of, am I actually being, you know, considered? Am I actually being, like, taught something with my, with my teacher's full focus? And even that, with combo classes, student aides were brought in. And so in addition to that, having the opportunity for the student aides to learn what it means to be a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students firsthand, it's also sort of making the teacher depend on those students to do their job in order so that both the grade levels are adequately taught. So, sorry, it's like, my words were kind of like, I'm a bunch of, sorry about that.
Perfect, thank you.
But, but yeah, other than that, I just want to say thank you once again for bringing that issue to public attention and hopefully, throughout the process and however long it takes for you, the Board of Education and yourself to come up with a solution, hopefully. Just hoping it's one that serves both students and teachers alike. So, yeah, thank you.
And you did a great job. And I think maybe we need to have you come and present when it comes time to make these decisions, to remind everybody how important it is. You're very eloquent. Thank you.
Yes, I second that. Thank you. Okay, so I am now going to open it up to the Board of Education to discuss. We can take it. It sounds to me like everybody's kind of on board for a study on the platform, communication platforms. It's kind of a no-brainer. Is that fair? Okay. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up. I know trustee Vane, you indicated you had something else you wanted to add.
I'm just wondering if you can offer a sense of time. So are these annual goals or how long do they take? When could we expect, you know, a return from these studies? Like, what does that look like?
I think it'll, it's going to be a process. And there'll be, again, touch points along the way to bring back so different, different items will have different, um, metrics to report on. Ideally, we'll be able to keep this conversation out there. I think it's important that we not stop the conversation and come back a year from now and say, okay, here's what we decided. Um, we need to have input. We need to let the public make input. We need to show them that this is being thoughtful, that we're putting work into it. If schools are consolidated, it won't be for September of '25. I could go in my office and come back and tell you, and I could get it done, but it wouldn't be successful. There'd really be a lot of angst and a lot of concern about it. The right way to do this is to do it with a committee, do the work, bring it back as we move along so that everybody knows what's going on. And it starts with that demographic study that we'll get in the next couple of months. So, um, I, so that the, I guess the deadline, if you will, in my mind, would be September of '26. We won't have as many elementary schools as we have today, if that's what the data shows. Is that, I mean, and then everything else is kind of all, um, um, the employee consolidation workload study, that's going to be an ongoing process. I've already worked with cabinet on it. We've got some ideas. We're trying to get kind of the, the head of the snake, if you will, all, all set first. And then we can have people be responsible for certain areas and have, have conversations. And then as we, when we get that done, then we can bring in other people, other staff, to help say, well, this person's really spending too much time. They got too many programs. It's like, oh, that program's going to expire in three years or whatever. We just need to look at that. And also, as people retire, because every year people retire, we don't want to just automatically fly the job and hire somebody, right? We want to be deliberate about how we look at this. And so when these opportunities come along, we need to be strategic in what we're going to do. So that's going to be an ongoing kind of a process that as opposed to like, here's the answer. But I, I do envision bringing back a kind of a new org chart and what that will look like. And it doesn't mean that we don't keep working on it. Because if we do continue to decline, if that's what the demographics report shows, and, you know, typically those things, they don't turn around. Usually they just show the path that it's, that it's taking. We're going to need to continue that, that study and that, and looking at that. The facilities needs will instruct and assist with the school consolidation. So that'll be kind of part and parcel of the same. But also funding issues, you know, we're going to talk about that this evening. You're going to get a report this evening on that and what kind of, you know, what money we have available to do different things. But with inflation moving so quickly, with us having money available, we should identify schools sooner than later and get started on that process. Because if construction inflation is 10%, then, you know, a year from now, we're only going to be able to buy 90% of the improvements that we could have bought this year for 100%. I mean, we need to, we need to acknowledge that. So I think there's some urgency to this stuff. That's why I'm bringing it up. I think all this stuff is urgent. I think about our kids in combo classes, you know, we have them 180 days. That's it. And then they got them another 180 days, right? So somebody that goes through nothing but combo classes, are we really doing the best we possibly can for them? So I, I think there's a, an urgency to all of this. So try to move it forward as quickly as we can, but there has to be a lot of planning. So with our, our special needs students, if we're going to change schools, that requires that we have a new IEP or triennial, depending on what they're doing that year. We can't just suddenly move them. Our transportation department, you know, we have walk areas. So if you live within, I think it's a mile and a half for elementary, two and a half for middle school, five miles for high school, well, if we start changing boundaries, what does that mean? Do we need to provide more buses, hire more drivers? So there's a lot of study that has to go into that. We, our two middle schools, you know, we had, um, so we had two middle schools out in the canyon. It's now Crescent, but it was Vista Del Rio and then, um, El Rancho Middle School. Vista Del Rio's been closed for a number of years. We have El Rancho. We had, uh, Peralta and Saravilla in the Villa Park area. We now only have one middle school there. We had Santiago and McPherson were both middle schools in the El Medina attendance area. In Orange, we still have two, right? We've got Peralta and, or Portola, excuse me, Portola and Yorba. But both of those are below 500 students. They're 400 and something. So this committee is going to have to take a look at, um, does it make sense to create a K8 at those sites? Because they're right adjacent to California in one case and Sycamore in the other. So does that make sense? Other districts have a, a middle school campus on a high school campus. So instead of, you know, either moving all of one school to the other, combining the elementary in the middle, maybe we create a new middle school at Orange High School and call it Orange Middle School. I, you know, I, I don't know how that's going to play out. I see some advantages for students, right? You can have a really advanced eighth grader who wants to take calculus or is able, and we're able to offer it to them. So, I mean, there are, there are lots of things to consider and look at. And I think we have to do it really good due diligence. And it'll be bringing probably different groups, one group to talk about elementary, somebody else to talk about middle, and then possibly middle and elementary, K-12 options. And some of that's already been proposed in the master plan, so that'll help inform this work.
Thank you.
Sorry, talked too long, but.
I think with regard to facilities too, we also have to remember that we want to be in line for matching funds based on the passage of Prop 2 and make sure that we are doing things so that we can actually potentially get those funds. So I'm going to open it up to discussion. So really what's before us is whether or not we want to vote to, um, accept the superintendent's, request, I guess, to, to do, to conduct these studies that address all of these issues. So. Anybody?
Or you can just move the item and I'll go sit down.
Or we could have a motion and then discussion after we have the motion. It's.
So I move to approve the superintendent's recommendations for district goals to study.
Okay. I'll second. All right. So moved by trustee Glass and seconded by trustee Page. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item, let's see, 7B, Leadership Associates Superintendent Search Proposal. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education direct staff to enter into a contract with Leadership Associates for the superintendent search. And the Board of Education will consider the superintendent's search proposal submitted by Leadership Associates and provide direction to staff on the board's preference for either the traditional or targeted outreach process. Subsequent to providing direction to staff, the board may schedule the first phase of the search project, which is the initial meeting with the board. So, just so we are clear, um, we, Leadership Associates is somebody that we work with. This is a specialized consulting job. And so this is, we, we agreed that we wanted to work with Leadership Associates. We received a proposal, which we reviewed at our public meeting last week. And, um, within that proposal, there were two different types of searches that would occur. The targeted had communication with, um, the communication aspect was truncated, I would say, so that it was more survey-related versus one-on-one and having that interaction with, with staff and with, um, you know, all stakeholders, essentially. So one is less expensive than the other. Um, so I.
So the, really that's the only difference between the two is the outreach that they're going to do. One would be an electronic survey process. The other is the electronic survey process plus doing some meetings in the district where teachers could come, parents, community members, and they would take that input and then use that as they develop the search tool as they're looking for a superintendent. So it's, uh, it, I don't know if there's discussion or if you want to move it, but it's a, it's a, it's pretty simple. This is the higher price that's on here, the 36.5, that is the higher number. If you chose to do the targeted instead of the broader traditional search, it would be $4,000 less.
Okay. So, any comments from anybody? Anybody want to jump in on this issue right now? Trustee Yamazaki?
I, I just want to say I think it's really important for us to do the traditional search because I think parent and teacher input is going to be invaluable in this process.
Okay. Let me just ask, is there anybody that is favoring the targeted outreach? That's probably the easier way to look at this. Is there anybody? So, okay. So does anybody want to move to go with the traditional outreach process?
I'll move it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Yamazaki, seconded by trustee Pelley. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Um, motion passes seven zero to go with the traditional outreach model.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, item 7C, their proposed revision to board policies and bylaws, second reading, minus the policies that we polled. And my understanding is there is one public comment. Is there a presentation on this? I don't.
No, there isn't.
Okay.
No, there isn't.
So since there is no presentation, why don't we call the public speaker, public comment up? Okay. Gary?
So while the public speaker's coming up, maybe I'll just reiterate again. Board policies, just in case you didn't hear, because maybe you want to speak about one that's been pulled. But 0410, 0510, 5131.9, 5148.3, 6152.1, 6154, and 6177 have all been pulled and will be brought back at a future meeting.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure which ones those are. So the ones I was going to speak to were going to be the placement math courses and the homework makeup policies.
That one's polled and that one's polled. Yep.
Oh.
But that's fine. Go ahead and speak to them. I mean, it's good to speak because then they can hear your comments. But I just want you to know that we're not going to be taking action on those this evening.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's great for me then. All right. Well, good evening, Madam President. Superintendent Christensen, welcome back.
Thank you.
Board members, committee members, fellow teachers. As a 24-year mathematics educator in Orange Unified School District, I'm addressing policies, placement, mathematic courses, and the makeup, homework makeup policy. After reading the agenda, I had a chance to circulate around school today and speak to some of my colleagues in the math department. Here are some of our concerns. We only have state data to assist placement from eighth grade and from the Sbeck grade 11. Therefore, grades from previous courses in a sequence should be vital to the proper placement of students in the next course. Yet unfortunately, at El Medina, I think throughout the district, when a student fails a course, they still move on to the next course in the sequence. This virtually ensures continued failure. We need students entering a class to have the foundational skills to be successful. I don't have a solution to that, but I, I think, I think we can do better. Regarding the homework makeup policy, the first paragraph under makeup work removes the key words, excused absences. So the original policy used to read, "Students who miss schoolwork because of excused absence shall be given an opportunity to complete all assignments." The revised policy says, "Students who are absent from school shall be given the opportunity to complete all assignments and tests," and continues on to say that they'll receive full credit. Yet in the second paragraph, there's an incongruity here, which maybe that's why you've pulled it. But the incongruity in the second paragraph says, um, "The policy expressly specifies excused absences," and with which I agree. Finally, "If a student misses the end of the term, as happens more often than you might realize due to families, especially at winter break, leaving early for, for, for break, it may be necessary for us as a teacher to enter a zero for a semester final or for missed work, understanding that we can do a grade change, we can do a grade change upon completion of the work." Otherwise, I feel like we open, um, an unintentional loophole where a student that misses the last week of a semester may not take this semester exam and is given a grade whereas all the students that were present were required to take the exam. So just some, some thoughts. I'd be happy to email or share these thoughts with you if you wish. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Um, any other public comments? Okay. So the proposed revisions to board policies and bylaws, the ones that are remaining, do I have a motion with regard to that item?
I'll move it.
Okay. Trustee Thomas, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Vane, okay. Do we have any discussion on them? Hearing none. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Uh, motion passes seven zero. Okay, so now moving on to item 8A. I understand there is also a public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Is there a presentation?
No.
There is no presentation.
All right. Jolyn?
So just going right to the beginning, my public comment is about the website. I don't know how many of you, I know some of your parents, you've had a chance to use the website. It is not very user-friendly right now because it is, the search is platform-wide. So if you're searching for something like at the district level, you might get answers for how they do it at Running Springs or Palmyra. If you're searching for something at your school, which you think you should be because you're at your school's homepage, it might give you a response for something at Villa Park High School or at the district level. So there needs to be something that makes, um, what you're searching obvious. So you can search the district, you can search the district-wide, all the schools, or you can just search your school. Because when I'm looking at my school's dress code policy before the first day of school, it doesn't help to know what the other school's uniform policies are. And so I think that's just something that needs to be looked at a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, do we have any other comments on that?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. How about, um, board members? Any comments or questions or thoughts? This is a first reading. They'll be back next month for a vote. Okay. All right. Um, item 8B, Annual Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2324. Ms. Salima Holgwin and Niagara Niagara to present, my understanding.
Yes, thank you, Board President Erickson. Tonight we have Mr. Glenn, who is here from Niagara Niagara to present the district's annual audit for the fiscal year ending in 2324. So I will turn it over to Mr. Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present the audit report for the fiscal year end, uh, 2324. So that would be in, ending June 30th of 2024. The audit is an annual event, as I'm sure you're all well aware. It takes place over, uh, the months of February, March, all the way through November of last year when that, uh, report was issued. It usually takes place in phases, so we come out to the district offices twice. Once during the springtime and we focus on compliance areas. And at the end of the year, we, uh, focus in on the unaudited actuels, which have been approved by the board in the month of September. Also, closer to the very beginning of the audit, we visit sites, we test attendance, and we also test ASBs. So that's kind of a broad overview of the audit process. But as you can see, it's a, kind of a continual process. We're just about ready to jump into '24, '25 in the coming months. And it'll proceed kind of as, as I just explained. The end product is the audit report, which you should have all received. It's over 100 pages in length, so I'm not going to dive into anything specifically unless you'd like me to. But the main, the main object, the objective of the audit is for the auditor to express an, an independent opinion on your financial statements, first of all. And so in our opinion, your financial statements were fairly stated. That, that, basically what that means is as you adopted them in September, we, we verified those amounts, those balances, and those transactions. So going forward, you now have a set of, you know, where an independent firm came in and verified those balances. So going forward with your budgets and coming up your second interim, you can have that, uh, additional assurance that you have trustworthy amounts and numbers. The additional things that we do with our audit is we, uh, check a lot of the different programs against compliance levels. There was some conversation tonight about the number of compliance areas that, that have to be looked at now. There are just general compliance areas that deal with internal controls and laws and regulations. So we issue a three, basically three separate letters on those. So one that deals with internal controls in general, one that addresses state, and one that addresses, addresses federal. So if there's any findings or comments that we have for the audit, those would be in those areas of the report. If you wanted to see specifically what we audit for state, that is on pages 87 and 88 of the hard copy of the report. And that shows all of the different areas, such as the ELOP program and your TK program that we audit. And then for federal compliance, there is a, 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 a different program that we audit every year, usually. And so that program was talked about a little bit on page 90. And if there were any findings, that was also discussed in the findings section of the report. We, we'd like to thank the district for their cooperation with our audit. And we'd also specifically like to thank Business Services for their cooperation. It really does involve a lot of different departments, but obviously it's, the main focus is, is Business Services. So we would like to extend our thanks for the district's cooperation with our audit. And that is it for the presentation. If there's any questions?
Thank you so much. Um, do any of the board members have questions regarding the audit? Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, you too. Okay. All right. Item 8C, very excited about this. Orange Unified School Modernization and Renovation for Tomorrow, Smart Plan Update. Ms. Holgwin and Ms., uh, and Ms. Vasquez.
Yes. Thank you again and good evening, Board President Erickson, trustees, and community members here with us tonight and virtually. I want to start by thanking some of the contributors to tonight's presentation, Ms. Bolzara and Mr. Harland, who could not join us as they are representing the district at some other meetings, um, tonight. However, Ms. Vasquez and I will be co-presenting on behalf of their contributions. So during the board study session that took place in December, we provided the board information regarding the conditions of three of our district pools. We also provided the board with the scope of work options and total project costs for construction of the Villa Park pool. The board asked many questions, which we have been gathering answers to, and specifically asked about funding availability for projects and facility needs. So tonight, we will be providing the board that information along with updates to current and future projects. To bring our two new trustees up to speed, although I'm sure that they already are up to speed, I want to remind them that a little over 30 days after I started in this position, I provided the board with an update of the SMART plan, which stands for School Modernization and Renovation for Tomorrow. At that meeting, I shared that these ideas and subcomponents, as was previously talked today, interconnect with one another, and we needed more time to start implementing some of these ideas to improve our schools. Since then, and through the ongoing work to implement the plan, we've added Measure S and site modification requests to our project list. Our goal is to continue to work on these ideas and bring the board updates. For tonight, our update will address the project list and funding at, as not, uh, a follow-up, as a follow-up to our December meeting and a way of providing information to the board of some of the work that has been taking place and what we are considering. So as part of the project list in the SMART plan, we will discuss deferred maintenance, facilities master plan, Measure S, and site modification requests. facilities master plan, Measure S, and site modification request. First, I wanted to start with our deferred maintenance. And in order to better understand deferred maintenance, it is also important to understand routine maintenance and the difference. Deferred maintenance, as we can see here, requires major repair or replacement. While restricted, uh, maintenance, I'm sorry, while restricted is ongoing maintenance, however, even though routine maintenance is occurring, it still leads to deferred maintenance. As the building systems come to an end of their life cycle. For example, we have annual inspections that are ongoing of our alarm systems. Yet, as you will see in a future slide, that is one of our deferred maintenance projects scheduled for this summer. Our HVAC units are also maintained throughout the year through filter changes. Our custodial, custodial staff will help us with that. And our annual maintenance, however, again, their life cycles come to an end and need replacement. This is why the district has an internal deferred maintenance plan, which we recommend budgeting for annually, in addition to the required 3% routine maintenance, which, when we get into the funding, we'll talk about a little bit more. So, here, you can see some of the deferred maintenance projects we are working on and will continue to work on as part of this year's allocated budget. We have some asphalt replacement that is going to be taking place and hopefully will be finished by the summer of 2025. As stated, one of our school sites, Canyon Hills Elementary School, we are looking to replace the fire alarm. We have various sites that we will be replacing roofs, Fairhaven, Villa Park Elementary School, and different sites throughout. And again, some of these projects, we hope to complete by 2025. I always push the one, the wrong one there. Additionally, we have some slurry and restriping that will be taking place at our different sites, and then some of our paint and exterior trim and so forth at West Orange Elementary School. And that's also an ongoing project. Moving on to our facilities master plan, which we briefly talked, Mr. Christensen briefly talked about taking that into consideration as we're looking at the idea of consolidating some of our schools. We first need to note here, when we see that a facilities master plan is a continuous plan for, that is used with compiled information, policies, and data, and to help us plan for the facility needs for either pupil enrollment growth or decline. And in our case, as we talked previously, we are experiencing some decline. And this is a quote here from the California Department of Education, which again, talks about the continuous process that takes place. "In 2021, in July of 2021, OUSD's Board of Education approved the facilities master plan that is currently in place. At that time, as we heard earlier, we had a different enrollment, not 2014 numbers, but at, in 2021 of July, we had about 27,000 students. This year, it's slightly over 25,000, with charters and the addition of TK, as you see here in the enrollment numbers. The plan for capacity also talked about elementary schools housing 420 to 630 students. As we heard earlier today, we have some elementary schools that are under those numbers, some even under 300. Our K-8 schools, we had capacity enrollment with that facilities plan for 900 students. Right now, some of our middle schools are housing just slightly over 400 students. And then, our middle schools and schools 700 to 900, and again, that number there when we're talking about having about 400 students. And I apologize, the K-8 schools, 900 students, and that would be our McPherson, which is actually under 900 students at this time. The cost to implement at that time was just shy of $1 billion, as you can see here, which we know, as again, we discussed earlier, that inflation, that that cost today would definitely be over $1 billion if we were to implement everything in the facilities master plan. So, it's important to recognize that plans change based on student enrollment and student learning environment needs." I will now turn it over to Ms. Vasquez, who will talk about Measure S and site modification request.
Thank you. Good evening, President Erickson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Christensen, cabinet, and guests. I'm pleased to provide an overview of key milestones of the Measure S bond program. In 2016, the first bond in OUSD history, totaling 288 million, successfully passed. The bond measure, thoughtfully structured, was thoughtfully structured to ensure equitable distribution of resources among our four comprehensive high schools, with an allocation of 72 million for each campus. The bond was also dedicated to modernizing and upgrading the district's four high schools. The bond focused on key infrastructure improvements, including seismic upgrades, modernization of educational facilities, such as science labs and classrooms and technology enhancements. Additionally, the bond can position the district to, for state matching funds that can be used for broader facility improvements across the district, should the sites have eligibility for modernization. Thank you. The next several slides will provide an update on the progress of the Measure S program at each of our high schools. Let's begin with Canyon High School. In January of 2022, Phase One, which included the construction of a new science building that included administration offices, was available for occupancy. Phase Two, which involved the modernization of Classroom Building 400, was successfully completed and occupied by students and teachers the first day of school in August of 2024. We will see a Phase Three for each of our high schools. In Phase Three, we are exploring projects that align with the bond language. Each option will be further delineated and assessed with budget numbers for your consideration at a future date. For Canyon High School, Phase Three, options to be considered was, is to modernize existing classrooms and potentially construct a building with classrooms and restrooms to service the lower fields. Next, we have Al Medina High School. In August of 2022, Phase One was completed with the opening of new science building. We're currently in construction with Phase Two, modernization of the entire campus. Classroom Building 800 was completed and occupied during spring break. And following this winter break, students and teachers returned to newly modernized classrooms in Buildings 400 and 500. The contractor has now initiated demolition for the third phase, which marks the start of the modernization of Buildings 200 and 300. With any large-scale modernization projects, we have encountered a number of unforeseen challenges along the way. These include hazardous material, non-code-compliant low voltage and electrical systems, as well as underground utilities. These challenges have resulted in significant, significant additional cost. What you see before you on the slide is a Phase Two revised that is being proposed. It is recommended that this strategy be used to mitigate the cost impacts of these unforeseen. We would continue to complete the modernization of the classrooms. However, we would look to de-scope the administration building from the current contract. And we would place it as an option under Phase Three as a potential project, along with single point of entry to enhance safety and security, modernization of the library, and removal of portable classrooms. We will now turn our focus to Orange High School. In November of 2021, I'm sorry, November of 2020, Phase One was completed with the opening of the new science building. Phase Two, which involved the construction of a new classroom, student services, and administration building, was successfully completed and occupied by students and teachers at the start of the 2024 school year. Orange High School also has a list of potential projects for your consideration, which includes the removal of portable classroom buildings, potentially a new staff parking lot, and modernization of classrooms that remain untouched. Now, we return our attention to the final high school, Villa Park. Phase One was completed in February of 2022, with the opening of a new science building. Phase Two, which involves the construction of a new classroom building, was successfully completed and occupied by students and teachers upon the return from winter break. The contractor continues to work on improvements associated with the Building 100-200, and it's expected to be completed in this coming year. Also, for your consideration is also Phase Three, with options that include fencing for a single point of entry for enhanced safety and security of the campus, removal of portable buildings with replacements, and replacements where needed, and modernization, modernization of classrooms that still remain untouched. In addition to projects under deferred maintenance and the Measure S program, we are also managing projects that are funded by other sources, such as site discretionary funds, donations, or district identified and board-approved funding. What you see before you on the slide, under shade structures, we have seven sites that are receiving currently new shade structures, and we anticipate being complete with this project in June of 2025. In addition, we will be adding TK playgrounds to nine sites listed here before you, and the goal is to enter construction this summer and complete it shortly after the start of school. We are also wrapping up the renovations of the gymnasium. The sites include Al Medina, Orange High School, and Villa Park. Canyon High School, because it had a renovation that was funded by the Canyon High School boosters, only, not only, but received lights and HVAC for their modernization. And many of those gyms are currently being used, however, there are still some that are under construction and should be completed this coming summer. Other projects also include the new Villa Park High School pool, as well as the synthetic all-weather field replacement at both Canyon and Villa Park High School.
And before we open it up, we wanted to take a break here to give the board an opportunity to ask some questions. Just wanted to clarify that at Canyon High School, we are currently in the phase of evaluating the lighting system to be able to move forward with that. They have been working on the HVAC system there for, at Canyon High School. So, that's still in the works and the process. We thought we would break right here because that was a lot of information, just in regards to the different projects that are taking place and that have taken, you know, that have helped to modernize our schools before we get into the actual funding that has supported. So, wanted to take this opportunity for any questions or comments.
So, with regard to what has been covered so far, which I believe overlaps with the second part of the report, so I don't know if we want to wait, do we want to wait and address it then? Or does anybody have any comments right now or questions? Okay. So, I think you can move on and
Okay.
Address the second part.
Perfect. We'll keep going. Okay. So, now that we have talked about the project list items, let's talk about the funding to support those projects and potential future projects. At the December study session, again, the question was asked about what funding is available. Funding school districts receive for facility and modernization are very limited. For today, we're going to focus on what the district currently has for facility use. Additionally, it's important to note that there is external funding options through voter-approved bonds, which our schools have benefited from, as you just heard from Ms. Vasquez, through Measure S, which, and then there is also another opportunity through external funding, through Proposition 49, which, 46, I'm sorry, which is not something that the district has ever taken part in, but that does require a two-thirds vote. And additionally, there is what is known as a certificate of participation or a COP, which the district has previously had before. And basically, that's a loan where you get the funding upfront to be able to pay for some of these projects, and then you pay those funds back through general funds or other funds that are available. So, let's go ahead and get started here with some of the funding that the district currently has. Under our deferred maintenance fund, which are the revenues, as we discussed earlier, for major repairs, our current balance is approximately 7.7 million. Our budgeted funds, as you saw earlier, for some of the projects that we're looking to do by summer of 2025, is about 6.2 million, leaving an uncommitted amount of about 1.5 million. This year, we contributed 6 million to that account to be able to address some of the needs, and it is our recommendation that we continue to contribute about 6 million annually through the general fund to be able to support some of these needs, because some of those projects that we are doing, again, it's long-term projects that need to happen. So, obviously, you saw that list there. We have more than just six or seven elementary schools. We have 41 schools total, and all of those schools have needs in different ways. So, we, it is our recommendation that we continue to make those contributions. Under our building fund, this fund exists primarily to account separately for the proceeds from the sale of the bonds and may not be used for any purpose other than those which the bonds were issued. Ms. Vasquez previously shared all of the projects, all of the modernization that has taken place at our four high schools. As she shared, that money was distributed equally to each of the sites. So, you see here that all of the four high schools started with 72 million, and you could see the total allocated project budget for each of the schools, and then what is currently left at each of the schools. So, Canyon having roughly a little over 6 million. Al Medina, as Ms. Vasquez shared, we have encountered some unforeseens. So, currently, there is a negative balance, which is why we are bringing the recommendation to de-scope the administration building, which would change those numbers. Orange High School, a little over 3 million left, and then Villa Park, a little over two of unallocated project budget. Additionally, bond funds do incur, earn interest, and so here you have a breakdown of the interest that has been earned. For tracking purposes, we have identified what each school has earned. However, as a whole, the bond has earned a little, about 15.5 million in interest, and these interest earnings are available funds which can be spent on any lawful Measure S purpose. In other words, they don't have to be directly spent on the principal project, meaning that they don't have to go directly to each site. That's up to the discretion of the board in terms of the projects that may need to be done. Moving on to our capital facilities fund, also known as our developer fees here, these are the fees that are collected on residential, commercial, and industrial developments to mitigate the impact of the development. And we can use these funds to build facilities, replace portable classrooms that have exceeded their useful life. And here you see that the current balance we have is just shy of 6 million. We have budgeted for this year about a little over 5 million, leaving us an uncommitted fund amount of 870,000. Then, moving on to our state matching funds, and as mentioned earlier, the benefit of having passed a bond is that we can apply for some of these state matching funds, which we actually have, as you see down on the bottom. But again, these funds come based on a local sharing basis, approximately 50 to 50, 50 to 50 on new and 60 to 40 on modernization projects. They can be used for new facility construction and modernization projects, and they don't have to be used at the school site that generated these funds. There also, Proposition Two passed this last November. The regulations aren't yet in place, so this is going to be another opportunity as well for the district to be able to apply for some of these matching funds. Here in the fund, fund balance, you can see that our total balance there is 36.4 million, with 2.7 of that currently being, have been committed, that has been committed, and that is for the Villa Park Pool design, as well as the Little Theater at Orange High School, leaving about 33.7 million of uncommitted funds. And then, down at the bottom, you can just see a breakdown of what we've actually received based on the applications that we've submitted for matching funds, where Canyon, Al Medina, Fletcher, and Orange and Villa Park High School have generated some money based on the projects that happened at those school sites, resulting in a little bit, in 37.3 million of matching funds that the district has received for these projects.
Can I just ask you a question? Are there any pending applications right now?
We don't have any applications in the queue, however, we are, we do have schools that are eligible, and we do have some projects that we're putting together to submit.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, we have our special reserve fund for capital outlay projects, which is also known as our redevelopment agency funds. OUSD receives property tax revenue from 16 project areas, and 14 of those project areas will sunset in 2036, 2037, and two of those will not sunset until 2057, 2058. However, those last two only generate about 1% of those RDA funds. The funds may be used to repay facility financing, so for example, that SEAL The funds may be used to repay facility financing, so for example, that COP that I talked about earlier, that is an external funding opportunity that the district can look into, which we previously had as well, too. Those, the funds that are generated, that are provided to the district from this funding can be used to pay that. They can also be used to improve facilities, and there was actually a resolution that the board approved on April 14th of 2022, which allowed for the district to be able to use these funds district-wide for facility needs. We also use 2% of this funding annually for our RDA, our routine restricted maintenance. So in this fund, we have a current balance of a little over 20 million, with budgeted funds of 17.62 million and uncommitted funds of 2.4 million. Moving on, we also have a special reserve fund for capital, which again, the board approved through a resolution in May 19th of 2022, and this was a specific resolution and a specific fund that established for the field replacements, vehicle replacements, roof replacements, safety and compliance. And this funding, it comes from both the general fund, there's a contribution that's made from the general fund, but also from the RDA funds that I previously talked about in the previous slide, which is why this fund is called 4041, it's a sub-fund within Fund 40 of our special reserve fund. Currently in this account, we have a balance of a little over 6 million, with budgeted funds of 3.88 million, and then uncommitted funds of 2.29 million there. Now, taking this all and giving you a summary of the different available funds when it comes to facility needs. So here you see a breakdown of that, those uncommitted amounts that I previously referenced in the other slides, where we have our deferred maintenance, 1,552,456. Our building fund, and again, this is interest-only and needs to be used strictly for projects that are within the ballot language of Measure S, 15,691,000 with $81. Our developer fees, 870,097. Our state matching funds, 33,714,469. Our special reserve for capital outlay, 4,687,417, for a grand total of 56,515,520. And if we recall, when we looked back at that facilities master plan that was done back in 2021 and looking at the needs there, the needs of that facilities master plan were just shy of a billion dollars. So we can see here, while this is a good amount, it still does not address the big amount that is needed to address all of our facility needs. So this does take a lot of strategic planning and looking at the different things and prioritizing different projects. So what are some next steps that we want to bring forward to the board based on this information that we're providing? Is that we want to bring back a deductive change order to the, or we will be bringing back, I should say, a deductive change order to de-scope the administration building at Al Medina. We want to provide recommendations for Measure S Phase Three projects based on utilizing unbudgeted site-based budget funds and interest. As Ms. Vasquez noted, there are some options on part of Phase Three that have been discussed, however, there's still some analysis that needs to be done on those options there, as well as the needs of the site, and be able to work with the board in terms of some of those recommendations, again, based on what Measure S was established to do with modernization. We want to provide the board with additional information regarding the Villa Park pool and seek direction for the design, and provide information on field repairs, as these are some of the projects, as stated earlier, in the site modification requests that are still in the works, and that we are looking to get direction in how we are moving forward based on our recommendations. And now we will open it up to questions.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, Ms. Holguin, Ms. Vasquez, Ms. Bolzara, and Mr. Harlan, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is, I think, the most comprehensive report we have received in a really long time. It's something we were looking for. We've been asking these questions for a long time and trying to figure out where the money is, what kind of money we have, what's restricted. I just wanted to clarify, so this 15,691,000, that is restricted in the sense that it can only be used on Measure S projects, is what you said?
That is correct.
Okay, and so that is interest-only, that is not what is left on those projects, or whatever's left over to use on those projects, correct?
That's correct. So the language on the ballot was clear that each school would receive the same amount, which is that 72 million. So based on projects that, the projects that have been completed, the allocated budget projects, each site has their own individual, however, the interest, there is something that is the overall for anything within Measure S.
Okay, and so, and then deferred maintenance is limited on what we can use it for, that is strictly deferred maintenance?
Yes, it is for the deferred maintenance, and, and again, some of those routine maintenance end up falling into deferred when they're not addressed.
Okay, I'll have some further questions, but I'm going to go ahead and I'll just start calling. Uh, Trustee Glass, do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate that, very detailed. For people like me who don't understand all of it, can you explain to me what the process for de-scoping at Al Medina would look like?
Sure, I'll let Ms. Vasquez explain that a little bit more.
So we had a conversation, or a meeting, I should say, with our construction team out there that included also our general contractor, Bernard, to begin those discussions. As part of that, the contractor understood the scope that was going to be looked at for de-scoping of the admin building, and they then began to generate a proposed credit to the district. That credit has been received, it's currently going through the vetting process to ensure that we are getting the value back to the project, and ultimately, once we receive that, it will come before the board for approval or direction. Thank you.
Trustee Vane.
Yes, thank you so much for your detailed present, or presentation. What I'm wondering is about the options for Phase Three. How did those become options? Are those options that the school wants? Have they prioritized those options?
I'll also let Ms. Vasquez speak about that. We were both not here in the inception of the Measure S, nevertheless, we have had some consultants that have been here through the process of Measure S, and I know Ms. Vasquez has had some conversations with them about those options, so I'll let her explain that.
That, that is correct, as described by Ms. Holguin. That information was identified through some documents from our consultants, like the removal of portable buildings that have exceeded their life expectancy. Others were proposals that had been received by the district on considering, for example, Canyon High School, the need for a classroom building containing restrooms for the lower fields. And so in addition to that, we also looked at the language of the bond, the modernization of buildings that have yet to be modernized and are currently outside Phase One and Phase Two. Does that answer your question on how it came to be?
I was here.
Oh, thank you.
So it may be helpful to, that, so because there are funds left, bond funds left, and say Canyon is a really good example, right? The work has, that had been planned initially has been completed, so with these remaining funds, staff will have to bring back to you some options, but ultimately, these options will fall within the bond language, so they'll all be permissible, but there's a lot more ask than there is money to be able to, to deal with some of these, so they'll be recommended, they'll come back with, with numbers and options, and they're happy to provide recommendations as well.
I guess what I'm wondering is, do the, which options do the schools want? And is that included?
Well, I think we have to identify the options, and then they can speak to that.
Okay.
That's probably the best way to do this, because I, they're not here, and I don't want to speak for them. I, I've heard that the restroom down by the field, I've heard things that, yeah, some people are interested in, but I think that's part of the process, right? Of you getting a report, them having an opportunity to speak to the different options, and ultimately you all making that decision.
Thank you.
It's kind of like with the, with the interest as well, right? How, how that interest gets used.
Trustee, oh, are you, okay, Trustee Yamazaki?
First of all, thank you so much for this informative overview. I know for some of us, it's a great review, and for others, it's the first time hearing it, so I think this is really important for us and also the public. That being said, I wanted to talk about the building fund. I appreciate this thoroughness, and I could see, for example, I have a question regarding the allocated budget funds versus the unallocated budget. You know, the unallocated budget will go towards the Phase Three, correct?
Correct. The unallocated project budget, yes, that would be the Phase Three.
Okay, and, and Al Medina, we are over by 3 million dollars approximately. Would you be able to use the interest earned to cover that deficit, I guess?
That would, well, and first of all, that number, should the board accept the de-scoping, and the, which would be a credit, that number would change. However, to answer your question, that would be up to the board to decide that, yes, we could use the interest to cover some of that negative.
So with the de-scoping, does, is this number not include the de-scoping?
That number does not include the de-scoping at that time.
So how much do you anticipate that it will give us a credit back?
I would say anywhere between probably 1.2 to 2 million, something in that area.
So that means that would leave us about 5 million to go to Phase Three?
No, it would not, because you are negative right now, the 3.6.
Well, would I include the interest?
If you would include the interest there, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, that's.
If, if you included that part, however, again, that interest for each of the schools, it was tracked, that, it was for tracking purposes, it was that way, however, it doesn't have to follow the actual project.
So you're saying that 5 million earned at Canyon High School, for example, does not need to be spent at Canyon?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that will be up to the board to decide.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes.
And also, I, I just want to make it clear, the Measure S funds that we, and I know we've talked about this in the past, but you know, for people who are new, like, there's a clear, clear description of where we can spend the money. Does that include athletics? Like fields, or pools, or tennis courts, or is that in the bond language for Measure S?
It's for the classrooms' modernization.
Okay.
I would say depending on what, how the project would tie to something that dealt with that, we would have to look at that very clearly before giving you an answer on that.
Okay.
We're, we're talking to legal counsel on some of these things, like the question about the interest, so bond, bond counsel, and so when we propose projects, then we'll make sure that those are in compliance with that, or if something comes up that's questionable. The bond language was written very broadly to give the board a great amount of flexibility, however, we also made commitments to the community.
Right.
As to how we were going to invest that money in our schools. So they're kind of, even though it's permissible, it may be permissible, it may not be, it may not feel like it's the right thing to do based on what was promised before.
Okay.
So in terms of flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Trustee Page.
Thank you again for your presentation. My questions are also on Phase Three and how some of them are options. I know that one of the biggest things that the bond had promoted was the removal of portable buildings, so I would assume that would be a top priority for a lot of our schools. Some of the portables that are still at our sites, like, I, I even had classes in there a long time ago, so we should remove them, but some of them also recommend fencing for a single point of entry and enhanced security, would that also fall? Like, let's just say, we don't have the funds through Measure S, but we have a student security plan that we're also working on, would we find alternative funds to be able to create fencing and safety at our school sites?
We're not going to go spend 72 million and then stop work, right? Schools still need work, there's more that has to be done. These are just the bond funds that are available, so there will be other projects above and beyond that. So yes, we will have to find alternative funding sources to do that, like the safety money.
So there's possibilities that all of this will be funded, just potentially not through Measure S, but we would find other facility funds to continue the projects?
It's possible. I don't, I couldn't commit to it, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Pelley.
Thank you, great report. Budget is not something that's easy to understand, even if you've done it for a long time, but this was really comprehensive, and I really appreciate this presentation. I just had a question about deferred maintenance, and I, I believe we've asked this before, but I want to clarify how, as you said, you know, we have 27 elementary schools, and we've got five or six on a list for different things this year. How are those determined? Is it just need, is it school sites, you know, reporting things that are happening? How, how do you decide what sites get the deferred maintenance each year?
So through our maintenance and operations team, we have our safety coordinator that goes out and does our facilities inspection at all of our sites, which is part of the FIT inspections that are done annually, and through that process, then each of the school is rated, or each of the schools are rated, I should say, and taking safety into consideration, the lifecycle, and all of those things. Then we, as I stated earlier, there's a 10-year deferred maintenance plan where we identify, okay, these schools are now at the top priority, and, and continue to break down, which is why we are recommending that the board continue to fund 6 million at minimum annually towards these needs, because as we've identified on that list, the 6 million is only allowing us to address, like you mentioned, some of our schools and not all of our schools.
Okay, so if we had more money, obviously, there would always be deferred maintenance that we could be doing on our elementary schools.
Absolutely.
So we can always use more money for that.
Absolutely.
Correct? Okay, thank you so much.
Trustee Thomas.
Thank you both very much for that thorough presentation. My questions were answered, Ms. Yamazaki asked them, so thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have, I do have a question regarding the outstanding project of the fields. Hold on. Where is it? Somewhere in here.
Site modification request?
The fields at Canyon and Villa Park. It doesn't say how much you expect that to, to cost. Do we have a, like, an estimate of how much that is? Because that's something that's going to have to be done, right?
I'll let Ms. Vasquez explain a little bit more, she's been working with some of the architects to get an estimated cost, so I'll let her share a little more detail on that.
Thank you.
We are currently in negotiations with an architectural firm that will be providing the proposed budget based on their information they've received on the analysis that has been done, for example, at Villa Park, given some of the drainage issues that we have to address. So right now, I'm currently negotiating that contract, and once, if the board approves entering the contract with the architect, they will develop a budget that we can bring forward, so that will be forthcoming here shortly.
Okay, so I mean, okay, I guess I'm not asking you to guess, but I mean, are we talking 5 million? Are we talking 10 million? Because that, I mean, that has a big impact on, and I don't know which fund it comes out of. Does it come out of any particular, which fund would it come out of?
So as you saw here on some of the funding, there was a fund that was created, the Fund 4041, that special, and fields were in there, so what the, by that resolution, the district has been contributing 300,000 annually towards that in anticipation that they knew that they were going to have to repair these fields. What I heard as an approximate number of what it could possibly be at the time was about 2 million to repair. However, as Ms. Vasquez said, there has been more, there have been more things that have been identified in the needs of the repair, so we want to be very careful on providing that, and that is why that recommendation of 300,000 at that time was made to be contributing as they were trying to make an analysis of what was going to be done. But again, based on what has happened since then, understanding that there's more need to those repairs than was previously anticipated.
Okay, so it comes from. Okay. So it comes from a sub reserve, or sub account or fund of special reserve for capital outlay?
Correct. So right now, when you're looking at that summary of available funds, it would be part of that 4.6 million that's there. However, you could also use state matching funds to be able to address that and some of the, but again, those would be decisions that the board would be making on that.
Okay. So going to the matching funds, it's pretty clear, obviously, that the vast majority of the matching funds came out of the El Medina project, correct?
So you go...
Looks like $17 million, 17 and a half million came out of Fred Kelly Stadium?
Yes. Let's go back to that slide there, because it was a total of 37.3 there. So you look at the El Medina, Fred Kelly Stadium, yes.
Okay. And are those state matching funds, is there a limitation on where they can be spent? I mean, do they have to be spent in the area or on any specific project?
They are to be spent on, you know, facility project needs. However, they don't have to be spent at that school site that generated the funds.
Okay. That was the question I had. Okay. With regard to Measure S projects, obviously there were varying outcomes, I'll just say, on how these projects went. I think that, for the most part, all of the projects are absolutely amazing. And, you know, I'm trying to figure out like the number of brand-new classrooms at Canyon are 54 new classrooms. And we have a lot of new classrooms at Orange High, a lot of new classrooms at Villa Park High School. El Medina High School, not so much. And we are renovating every classroom on that campus, which is, which is a good thing. But because of those unforeseen matters, the de-scope is significant. So my concern is, when we approved this, we approved a project that looked quite different than what El Medina looks like now. And that included a total reno of, initially, a total reno of the front office space, and front office building, I should say. And obviously, that got scaled back as time went by. But when we de-scope the office project now, does that mean that basically nothing happens to that front office space?
What, that would be up to the board. We would, we, as part of Phase 3, we could bring back to the board what it would cost to put that, and then based on what you have seen today with the funding, could make a decision if that's something that you want to move forward, based on the available funding that the board has.
Okay. Because those unforeseen hazardous material, electrical, low voltage system replacement, unforeseen underground requiring replacement, I mean, it seems to me, I mean, that's in the millions and millions of dollars of unforeseen cost just on the El Medina campus.
Currently, right now, the, we're a little bit shy of 7% in change orders, and that is due to a lot of those unforeseen, so roughly a little over about 1.2?
This evening, there will be a change order that would raise the change order rate to 6.7%, but that does not include the unforeseens that we already are aware of for Building 200 and 300. So we will continue, continue to rise as we address these unforeseens.
Okay. I mean, I guess my concern is, is I want these four high schools to be what we promised the public. And I think that I can definitely say that it's met at every high school. I don't think we, we are meeting it at El Medina. And it's because of those unforeseen circumstances, I'm assuming. But looking at things like the interest, I mean, that can be allocated to basically ensure that we fulfill the mission of Measure S, right? It doesn't have to be used at any particular school. We can use that in order to offset any costs that were unforeseen. Is that, is that right?
That's up to the board's discretion. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. And as far as projects go that would generate matching funds, I think we've talked about this, and you, you gave us information in a Friday letter, a Friday packet, that we do not have any outstanding matching funds on any of the high school campuses. So in other words, when we start a project, we will not be receiving matching funds for any new project that we start at any of the high schools. Is that true?
The eligibility at the high school level?
Eligibility at the high schools is gone.
I want to confirm some of that because we believe that maybe the, for Canyon, an application had yet not been submitted, but we want to confirm that.
Okay. So again, I'm just going to kind of repeat, I've said this a million times before, but if we commit, let's say, $10 million to an elementary school campus, well, I'm not going to say 10, because they don't have that much eligibility, but we commit $5 million to an elementary school campus, we get back 60% of that or 50%, depending on what the project is, in matching funds, right?
Based on their eligibility, yes. That they would still have some.
Okay. Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions. Does anybody have any more comments or questions?
I have another question. I'm going to go back to the first part of the presentation and talk about the deferred maintenance projects. And I, I understand that there's a system as to how you decide which deferred maintenance gets priority, but I know recently someone at Crescent had mentioned that there was a lot of needs there, but yet I don't see Crescent on the list. And I was just wondering, like, how do you integrate those needs into, I know we have a lot of needs, so I know it's hard, but I am concerned about some of the things that this, that has been mentioned in the past, too. So how, how, how do we make sure that, you know, our kids are safe and what projects are prioritized?
So again, we use that FIT assessment and then the expertise of our maintenance and staff, and then looking at when things have been, you know, replaced and so forth, taking all of those factors into consideration and the recommendations. You know, there is, there is a lot of need, but limited resources.
I recognize that. There's a lot.
Yes. But those are, that's something that our M&amp;O team, and so these are the recommendations that they...
So if you get a new request, do you go back and look at it to see, like, things happen, right? We, something that's working today may break tomorrow.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yes. I mean, if it's, you know, an HVAC unit goes down, we automatically, now that goes into its priority.
Like the top priority.
Right, correct, correct. And so that's why this is continuous, like, a moving target, right? Based on things that come up, surprises and so forth, where we're having to address them.
Okay. All right.
Like, we have the pool, which is, you know, a repair part of the consent, but that's something that, you know, those unforeseens, those situations.
Right. I mean, obviously, safety is...
Correct.
...the first priority?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, something that where our kids couldn't even access, and so, and we need to make sure that we get something going automatically so that we can put it back in use for, for our students. That would be definitely a priority.
Okay. All right. I know we have a lot of needs.
Are those, the repairs in an emergency situation, which fund did those come out of?
So either from deferred and/or routine maintenance, depending on it.
All right. Well, I think we, are we all done with questions? Trustee Bean?
Can you speak to the eligibility amounts for each of the, or is there, maybe you can send it to us at some point, for each of the sites?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Correct. We're working with our consultant to put all that together so that we can provide that updated information for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're, we're good. Again, thank you for a really thorough report.
Thank you.
That was fantastic. And in addition to what you sent us on matching funds and things, or eligibility and things like that in our Friday packet, I do appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to... Consent items. These are passed in. One moved. Unless anybody wants to pull an item? Does anybody want to pull any items from consent? Hearing nothing? Do I have a motion on the consent items?
I'll move.
Thank you, Trustee Thomas. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Pelly. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Okay. Let's see. All right. Now we have public comment, and I think we had other comment cards.
We have eight comments for non-agenda, which means each speaker gets three minutes to speak. I'll share the first name and then another one on deck. So first, we have Caitlin Monaco, and then on deck, we have Kim Atkinson.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm going to talk as fast as I can because three minutes is not enough for my topic. Hi, my name is Caitlin Monaco. I work for the CARES Expanded Learning Program. I'm here to discuss some reclassification concerns that we're having within our district. The first issue is the difficulty we're having in experience with advocating for our job description. CARES has presented our new job descriptions to both our prior board and this new board at the beginning of your term. However, the time was not right to present these at that time. Sorry, I'm really nervous. The time is now. We're losing staff daily to surrounding school districts and to alternative jobs because our job descriptions are older than we are. Many of our job descriptions in the district are 35 years old. That's about half of the age of our district. There have been many changes in 35 years, including larger class sizes, limited staffing support, and many changes on-site. We continue to have trainings and evaluations, as well as implementing new programming, such as ELOP programs and after-school enrichment. Yet our job descriptions have not been updated to include these extra programs, nor have they showed paid reflection of those changes. Sorry, I'm so nervous.
It's okay, relax. You're fine. You're good.
We do not have after-school aides, nor do we have, nor do we have one-on-one aides or nurses or after-school assistants with medical emergencies. We are on our own in the CARES program. We take these programs very seriously and the responsibilities of our students and their safety seriously as well. But without the additional staffing, paying, and descriptions in our job descriptions, it's simply not possible. The timeline set and of after-school programs, our babysitters, is gone. We're required to provide quality standard lesson plans that go into great depths and help to provide and guide our future generation. In order to make this happen, we need qualified and supported staff. Currently, we are a parent-paid programming, meaning our CARES program. Our parents' tuition costs contribute to our salaries and required supplies to create a desirable quality program for our students. Our parent fees increased two years ago, yet our salaries have not reflected this change. The time for that change, again, is now. If reclassification of our jobs results in a higher pay, that's because we are doing more than is in our job description, and we should be provided as well. The next issue require, is requiring our jobs to do more than is inside our job description. Sorry, guys, I'm trying. Because these descriptions are over 35 years old, many of these job duties are obsolete. This means we are hiring for jobs that do not match hiring posts. It's like working on IBM computers. This is a disservice to our prospective and existing employees. We're hiring for a position that doesn't exist anymore. Employees and new hirees may meet the qualifications listed and applying for the application for the position, but when presented for the job are ill-prepared for the workload. It's like packing for a vacation to go to the beach, only to be sent to the mountains. This is what's taking place, and it's just not acceptable anymore. A lot has changed in 35 years. Cost of living, technologies, and hopefully soon, our salaries, I have one paragraph. Our job description and salaries should reflect the current workload and qualification. This will ensure that the district hires and maintains quality employees, increased staff growth, and ultimately, the benefits of paying and shortage. Our kids are our future. Our staff are who is guiding them. Please help us to burn our spirits by helping support our staff. Review and revise our job descriptions to provide competitive salaries, which we need to have in our department, by our management. The time is now.
Thank you. You did great.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have Kim Atkinson, and on deck, Esteban Villa.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Atkinson. I'm the library media technician at Serrano Elementary. I'm also a longtime member of Chapter 67, our CSEA union. I've worked in the district since 2005. I also have three grown children who attended Orange schools from kindergarten through 12th grade and are all successful college graduates presently. As some of you may remember, I was here in November asking for help with regards to the LMT group specifically and the poor treatment we have received, in that our jobs have changed tremendously with many added job duties, including managing a one-to-one device program, which is not in our outdated job description, along with many other new responsibilities, which are also not addressed or acknowledged. Therefore, we are working out of class for a good part of each day. Much of the time, we're not even notified of these additions or changes. And as previously mentioned, there's an inequity among us with regards to the number of hours that we receive. So to put it simply, we're all paid different amounts to do the same job, which in my, my opinion, is illegal and unfair. As I've said before, this inequity has never been acknowledged or explained or justified by HR or by anyone, and they're fully aware of it, but continue to look the other way. Another thing our group struggles with is that we don't have a boss or a supervisor at the district level to fight for us. We report directly to our principals, so it's difficult to get anywhere, to get things remedied, since they all have different styles and many priority, varying priorities. Something else that's very apparent is that many classified employees do not feel as important as the certificated employees in our district. It shows in our treatment and in our salaries, which are much lower across the board. The schools cannot operate without us, but we feel undervalued much of the time. We do, however, feel appreciated by our students and our teachers and our administrators and our families, but not by our district. Most days, I do feel like I'm overworked and underpaid, and I struggle to get my job done properly, and I experience what I believe you would call work overload. While some of us may receive extra earnings from time to time, this money should not come from our school budgets. It should come from the district or state money. We're vital to our school sites. We work with students directly. We're in charge of the inventory of millions of dollars of books and textbooks and technology, but we struggle to do our jobs properly. Therefore, we need to be reclassified, and this can't happen without a reclassification clause in our contract. This clause would give us specific steps to take in order to get the reclassification done. And lastly, I have to say that we are not the only group that needs to be addressed. There are many other classified groups out there, not just the librarians, but so many others. And we struggle because our union is just not as strong as the teachers. Since they're all teachers and we have so many different groups, it's hard for all of us to come together. And we have so...
Thank you. Esteban Villa, and up next, after him, will be Luis Alvarado Gutierrez.
Hello. My name is Esteban Villa. I'm a classified employee. I'm also the chief union steward. I just want to reiterate some of the things they've said, which is, we want the board to know that we want reasonable language that is clear and transparent. Classified employees have expressed much frustration with past attempts to reclassify positions, address work issues, and professional development training. We want the board's support in training classified staff with the same level of dignity and value that they bring to OUSD. We want that treatment to be aligned with the district's core values: equity, integrity, respect, and excellence. Reclassification, if any employee is expected to perform higher-level duties than defined in their job description and that work is expected to be ongoing, then there should be clear language defining the... then there should be clear language defining the process and ensuring appropriate pay for services performed. The district wants to limit our ability to address reclassification issues to contract negotiations. They have suggested taking out of compensation, which would essentially charge the classified staff to apply, sorry, classified staff to pay the district's bill. We also want to address these issues in a more timely manner than once a year. Some of our job descriptions date back to 1977 in spite of a board policy 4119.3. Again, we want clear way to address workload concerns. We want clear parameters that define a reasonable workload. We want language that ensures mandatory training that is meaningful to our respective roles. Videos do not cut it. We say this because we care. Too often, we are put in a position to care for our students without being properly trained. We want to know that we are going to be best prepared to meet the needs of our students. We also want to know that the district cares about our safety as well. This is a matter of mutual interest, or at least it should be. Thank you.
Luis, and then on deck is Jolynn.
Well put. Good evening, brothers and sisters. I'm part of the negotiation team, and we've been fighting for a classification for many years now. It's been pushed year after year. I get members that confide in me. They have many concerns that their jobs have had the same classification since the '70s with outdated language, technologies, and processes. So we just want to bring everybody up to the future, and that's it, thank you.
Jolynn, and then up next, Mary Scott.
Hello, board. Some of you may recognize me, I tend to be a quite involved parent, and that's kind of what both of these topics are about. I come to board meetings when I can, and when I can't, it's because I have a prior commitment. So I was very disappointed when I went to look at the study session online that happened, and I was unable to find a video for that. So I'm hoping that's just something that has slipped through the cracks, and that'll get fixed and that video will get posted. Because I and other parents who can't make the meetings hopefully will have access to the information that the board gave at those meetings. The other thing that, I don't know, I think this is just the changing of the times, but I'm hoping this is something that we can kind of change back a little bit. With school safety, we have kind of locked the classrooms away a little bit. When I was little, a parent would wander through and know what was going on. That doesn't happen anymore, and that makes sense. But it also means that when your elementary school kid goes to class, they're kind of in a black box. You have no idea what they're doing, because they can tell you that they had a fight with so-and-so or that they went on the playground. But they don't tell you anything about actually what happened in their day, whether they did math or English or how long that took. If there was some way that the district could, like, do a day in the life of a third grader and show parents what's actually going on, I think it would go a long way to stop the disconnect that's going on. You see parents like, oh, these math, you know, we're still talking about the new math, that's super horrible. But I feel like I have way more problems with it than my kid does. So maybe if there was a way to show how it was actually getting taught in the classroom, it might take a little bit of that away from the parent feeling like, oh, my kid isn't, you know. You would see that what's actually going on, and I don't know if that's possible. Maybe some high schooler can make that a film project. But just something to allow parents a way to see and feel like they're part of, not necessarily their child, but a child that's doing what their child would be doing's classroom. So anyways, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Scott, and then on deck is Olga.
Good evening, again, President Erickson, Superintendent Christensen, members of the Orange Unified School District Board, high school representative and community. My name is Mary Scott. I'm the executive director and CEO at Orange Lutheran High School, where I've served the last four and a half years. And Mr. Tran, although you did not select Orange Lutheran, I'm very impressed with the education that you received and the young man and the representative you will be for Orange and the surrounding community. Welcome to the new board members, and thank you for all your service to the OUSD board. Having served on many boards, I realize you are voted into your positions to listen and balance many important voices in transparent ways to support students, teachers, staff, and families. Thank you for discussing our interest in the Peralta site in closed session today. I'm an educator with an earned doctorate and more than 40 years of experience in schools and universities. I love students of all ages. In my various administrative roles, I've overseen everything from human resources, facilities, construction, athletics, and directly before leaving the university to become a head of school and CEO, I served as provost and executive vice president. Orange Lutheran has expressed interest in Peralta property since 2007. In 2017, we sent a letter of interest to Mr. Rick Ledesma and Ms. Gunn Marie Harrison Hansen, offering to work through the necessary steps to purchase the Peralta surplus property at above-market appraisal of $12.5 million. I stand here before you tonight to say we are well-prepared to enter into negotiations that are appropriate and competitive in today's market. We were established in 1973, and since our opening have been proud participant in many activities and services in the city of Orange. In the 24-25 school year, students came to Orange Lutheran High School from 206 different zip codes. Our online, on-ground, and blended learning platforms allow us to reach students across Southern California. If given the opportunity to purchase the site and build these facilities, Orange Unified School District students will play on these fields and swim in this pool. A look at their athletic schedules show that we regularly compete against Villa Park, Orange, El Medina, and Canyon High Schools. It should be noted that we are not proposing classrooms or school buildings on the site. I'd like to draw your attention to the conceptual plan which we are distributing, which only includes single-story structures, which will support the athletic fields, pool, and various courts. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter for the students in Orange today and in the future.
Olga, and then last, we have Cora Newman.
Good evening, board members and staff. My name is Olga Bevz, and I'm the president of JCJ Partners LLC. Our local firm specializes in school facility planning and public policy issues. I have over 20 years of experience in this field and work on projects throughout California. I have good working relationships with multiple local school districts, and I also serve as a legislative advocacy rep for the PTA at the public school my kids attend in Capistrano Unified. I understand the challenges that school campuses and districts face today. I'm here before you this evening as a consultant working with Orange Lutheran High School. I'm helping them learn about OUSD processes, priorities, and options for the disposition of the Peralta site. I got involved approximately two years ago and have been meeting with OUSD staff since May 2023. And I'm researching and clarifying how Orange Lutheran High School proposal may bring the most benefit to Orange Unified. My goal is to help Orange Unified and Orange Lutheran High School reach a transparent and mutually beneficial agreement.
I'm sorry, I think one of the trustees is having trouble hearing you, I apologize.
I'm sorry, all right.
If you need to.
All right, I have time, okay, let me get back a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, so I got involved approximately two years ago and have been meeting with OUSD staff since May 2023, researching and clarifying how Orange Lutheran High School proposal may bring the most benefit to Orange Unified School District. My goal is to help Orange Unified and Orange Lutheran High School reach a transparent and mutually beneficial agreement that will lead to the development of athletic facilities. I'm here, along with our other team members, to thank you for your consideration and to ask for continued discussion of the best way to move forward with our proposal. Thank you.
Cora?
Give me a minute to adjust this mic. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Erickson and members of the school board, Orange Unified School Board. My name is Cora Lee Newman, and I am president of Government Solutions, Inc. We are a government relations and community outreach firm that has been in business in Orange County for more than 30 years. As I am here this evening, as Ms. Scott announced, as a consultant to Orange Lutheran High School. My focus for Orange Lutheran High School has been focused on the redevelopment of the surplus site, Peralta Junior High School. In that work, I have met with over 40 neighbors of the Peralta community. And I'm here to tell you, and I started that work in February 2023. Over the last two years, as I mentioned, I've met with almost 40 individual neighbors, many of which I've been in their homes, their living rooms, their backyards, and have enjoyed meeting your neighbors at Peralta. It's a wonderful Orange community that surrounds that site. The neighbors, I've met with neighbors directly across the side on Chateau Street and East Cumberland Lane. I've met with neighbors directly across the street from Peralta on Meets Avenue. Additionally, I've met with neighbors living in close proximity to Peralta on East Glendora Avenue and East Heim Street. All in all, I've interacted with, as I've mentioned, many neighbors. In my meetings with these neighbors, I'm really happy to bring to you some good news. The neighbors are really ready for this change in Peralta. As you know, the site's been surplus for 30-plus years. The neighbors that live adjacent to this property are really ready to embrace a change in the redevelopment of this site. I have shared the conceptual plan that we handed out. I've emphasized that it is a conceptual plan, and I have also emphasized to the neighbors that we cannot make those decisions, that the decision that ultimately happens on this site is yours, the school board's. But I've shared with them these plans to get a sense of what the receptivity would be if we get to a point where Orange Unified School District and Orange Lutheran High School can work on an agreement to purchase the site and bring revenues to the district. I'm glad and happy to tell you that, report, that I think that if that decision is made and that agreement does come forward, you will have a very receptive audience in the community that surrounds this property. Thank you for your time, and I hope I'm back with friendly neighbors again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that the completion? Okay. All right. Okay, I'll move on to number 18, other business, and that would be board staff conference recognition and comments. Do we have any board members that would like to take your time now? Trustee Yamazaki?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to wish everybody a happy second semester, a happy new year. Yesterday, I attended the Orange High School showcase, and as was mentioned, it was really a great event, and it was good to see so many community members come out. A lot of the elementary school students performed. They were dancing, cheer, singing, and band, and it was really wonderful. And even though it was windy, there were a lot of people there. And I want to thank the staff for putting this together. And one thing to note is I got to visit the new gym, and it was really, there was a wrestling match going on, and so that was really fun to see. And today, I visited McPherson Magnet School, and I was honored to be a judge for their two-day science fair. So if you have a chance, they still are doing a science fair tomorrow, and the students did an amazing job, and I hope many of them will participate and go forward to the Orange County Science Fair. What was even, what was great, too, was to see all the parents, former parents, retired teachers, and community members who came back to participate as a judge. There was like excitement, it was sort of like a mini reunion amongst them. So I think I credit the school for, like, continuing that bond that they have there. So thank you to Mrs. Conrad and Mrs. Carpenter for organizing this opportunity for our students. And again, happy new year, and happy new year next week for those who celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Was that under two minutes?
I believe it was. I didn't get my hook out, so I think it's good. Okay, all right, well, I think that if there's nothing else, we will be adjourning the meeting at 9:50.